Well, thank you very much. Welcome to the Montclair City Council meeting. If you're first time to Montclair, welcome to Montclair. We will begin this meeting with a call order. We will start with the invocation and the pledge allegiance. Before I get to those two items, I know people want to speak today. So this would be obviously a good time to fill out the speaking card and submit the speaking card. So let some more people submit their speaking cards before we get started with the invocation. And then you can also, after we're done with the invocation, you'll be able to submit your speaking cards as well. So I'm going to ask the city cl- I'm going to ask that our county supervisor Kurt Hagman will lead us in the pledge allegiance. And then, um, and then who will be doing the invocation today?
It will be Police Chaplain Joe McTarsney, Pastor of Calvary, Montclair.
Right. Okay, please stand. Our chaplain. Joe? Pastor Joe? There he is. It's all yours.
Please join me in prayer. Father, we come before you. And first off, we want to pray for all the people that make up our city here in Montclair. We ask you that you please provide mercy to them and keep them safe tonight. We do thank you, Lord, for the members of our city council and their leadership. Please keep them healthy and strong. May they never grow weary while doing good works for others. We also pray for them as they make decisions. May they be honoring to you in those decisions. May they call upon you to receive your wisdom and your guidance. I thank you for that you are faithful to hear and to receive our prayers this evening. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Supervisor Hagman, hold the pledge, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Please look toward the flag and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excuse me, I have a little cold today, so bear with me.
Roll call?
Thank you, roll call.
Councilmember Lopez?
I'm here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember Rue?
Present.
Mayor Protam Johnson?
I'm here.
Mayor Dutre?
I'm present.
Okay, at this time, we're going to do two presentations. And the first presentation will be done by a fourth district update by San Bernardino County Supervisor Kurt Hagman. And again, if you want to fill out the speaking cards, feel free to submit them during presentations. Thank you, Mayor, and council members and residents. I, first of all, appreciate the opportunity to come out and give a direct update with you of what the county of San Bernardino is trying to work with the city of Montclair and the region, what's going on. A lot of times, I see the council members at their board meetings and different things we're on all the time and different events, but we don't get the opportunity to report out to our residents of what we're trying to do. I'll start off with a preference or, I guess, a bias that I have the best district in San Bernardino County with the five cities that I have in the West End. It's Chino, Chino Hills, Ontario, Montclair, and Upland. And most of my fourth district is embodied in the cities and not, like my colleagues who have a lot of unincorporated areas they have to deal with. So I get to work directly with my cities and my city councils, city managers, and try to work on projects that we work on collectively for our residents. So I, again, appreciate it. So I'm going to start off with like the more regional things and work our way down. The first one is, this is a big year for us. We went through a countywide RFP for ambulance services. And so we're going through that, changes right now through our ambulatory service that will take effect sometime in the next, over the next six months to a year as we transition from AMR to our county, our county and city fire departments. It's going to be primary medical care and ambulatory service, which has been a big issue for a long time. Make sure, especially if it was highlighted during COVID, we're having response times that was below par and other things. So we're hoping this gives our residents better service going forward. And that was a big thing we handled the last few months. We also started a homeless ad hoc committee. I think it's all our residents and a big issue for the county of San Bernardino and for all our cities right now is what do we do about the homeless situation within our county? For the, good report out is for the first time in many years, we have not increased very much from last year to this year. We raised about 2%, but we were basically hovering out. But that's not good enough. We have about 4,200 homeless that we counted this last homeless in time count throughout the county. And we are trying to work with our cities and nonprofits throughout the area to really come up with a, a rep, a plan that we have not done in the past. And, and so we've been working with the city of Montclair, for other cities throughout the county to come up with facilities that will be permanent, that will be worked out, and we hopefully will start to see some relief from that and some help for those who need help from us over the next year. So we, hopefully, next year's numbers will be lower than this year's number. The county is, we've put down their federal funding update, really what it was. We all went through COMLIS and CARE Act dollars over the last few years. And I'm proud to say that the county is very stable financially. We were able to pay off our pension bonds and some other things, so we're doing very well going forward. So therefore, we had a little more resources the last couple of years to invest in the community. My goal in the West End is to invest in things that will hopefully benefit the infrastructure that help continue us to grow and to also to bring services for our residents, you know, quality of life issues here in the local area. And this is not me reporting to you. This is, you could stop me and ask questions as we go anytime. Prado Park, so that's one of our regional parks. I have them in the West End. So these are some of the updates we're doing there. We're doing a number of, the county set aside $30 million to invest in its regional parks. And so we're doing a number of projects here in Prado Park as well. These are all construction projects that either underway, that will be done this year. First of all, we're starting off a new gatehouse and monument signs. We're basically moving the gatehouse way back, so we had queuing problems during the rush hours of people being stuck on Euclid Avenue. So we're going to have three lanes versus two and move the building way back. So that'll help with that. We have a new playground that should be opening up this next month. That will be for our residents and our little residents who want to go out and use the playgrounds there. We've replaced all their infrastructure in RV campground with new restrooms, bathrooms, showers. All the utilities are going to be replaced. We actually have, one of the first places we deploy Starlink there for high-speed internet as well. It works very well. We realized with a lot of our remote parks that we have in the high desert and stuff, you can't run a cable to that. So it's worked out very well with Starlink. We have a donation from our Congresswoman Norma Torres, about $2.3 million to rebuild the snack bar. So we'll actually have facilities on the park as well, and that should be done in October. And we're adding a splash pad will be here by the summer. So for those who want to get a escape from the heat, you go to Prado Park and the kids go run around with some water. That should be done in July. We're doing new boat dock and make net facilities that could also run a boat and go in the lake there during the summer months. I also am the representative for Ontario International Airport on behalf of the county of San Bernardino. So as you know, we're in year seven of local control, bringing it back from LAX, and we've seen consistent growth since we picked it up. And we're also celebrating its 100th birthday this year. And so in 1920, 1923, Ontario is just a strip airfield, but it has grown into when the international airport that we have today with two terminals, one of the longest runways in Southern California. Will serve over 6 million passengers this year, the highest annual total since 2008, years before the airport returned to local ownership in 2016. We offer nonstop flights to a large number of major international destinations and domestic destinations. Here's some of the new routes we had in the last 12 months. I think New Pacific Airlines just went out of business, so I got to take that down. Best Southwest is adding to Houston and to Portland. And we have daily routes to Portland, Salt Lake, Seattle, and Houston, and El Paso. So I'm just hoping that anybody wants to plan their summer vacation, will at least take a look at Ontario first. And we know it's a lot easier to get to the LAX and a lot easier claim to go through. We're also looking at Nashville for Southwest and Houston from United Airlines. And global entry. So when I got my global entry a while back, I had to go actually to Las Vegas Airport to get it done. And LAX, if you want to wait like six months, you can get an appointment at LAX. But we just started to have Global Entry Enrollment Center now at Ontario International. So you go over there and it's quick and easy and get through those lines a lot quicker with the TSA. So some of the district projects we're funding right now for Montclair is we're able to help our police department to get a new Bearcat armored vehicle. There's John, I think you were the first one to drive it around, didn't you? Mayor Dutre? No? I didn't get to do that either. Chino Basin Water District, we're able to help donate to repairs or improvements of the spillways one and two. Montevista Water District, we help with the pipeline project over there, improve SE power lines. And we have other ones in the work. So locally, we also have the regional park called Gwasti, which is where, if you know where Topgolf is, that's the county's regional park up there. We're going to be looking at a surf park next, across the street from that, their flood control. So if you're a surfing addict, they'll put up to like 40 surfers at a time and dial your wave, size of wave. So again, trying to bring quality of life things for our residents to go do. There's also lagoon pools for those of us like me who don't surf to go enjoy. That's what the aerial view is going to be like. The different lagoons, so it's just a place to hang out here during the summer, hopefully. We're also, looks like we have Live Nation who got kicked out of Irvine. We're trying to bring them to Prado Park. So we've actually acquired the seating for that already, and we're looking at putting that at Pipe, at Euclid and Pine Avenue. So we may have our own amphitheater here coming up here very shortly. That would be a temporary one until we build a permanent one for concerts. And we're in the, we should find out by June, I think we have a 90%, 90% chance of getting an LA 28 Olympic venue at the Prado shooting range. City Council for LA has got to approve us in June, so we're hoping to get that as well. And tonight, we want to work with the mayor and the city manager. We also said that we would help donate another $1 million toward your park improvements. So that was not on the slide, but we will try to continue to support our city as we go forward. And I'm open for questions if you have any. Question for my colleagues. Anybody that got a question? Looks like Mayor Protam Johnson.
Thank you Supervisor Hagman for being here and all the fabulous work that you're doing. I do have one question about the Live Nation amphitheater. How many people will that seat add? Well, I guess two questions. How many people will it seat and how, what's the, is, will it be year-round or seasonal or?
Generally, it's seasonal. Be about 40 to 45 vents a year. As you know, we do have a facility in Glen Helen that's quite a bit larger already. They are looking at, the one in Irvine was 8,000 seats, maximum of 12 if they put the seats on the ground level. They're looking at a, more of a niche one between 3,000 to 6,000, but they're still doing their research on that. One way or the other, we probably will have an amphitheater when that's exclusively Live Nation or others. We don't know yet.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Lopez?
Supervisor Hagman, thank you. It's good to see you, buddy. Regarding Prado and the Olympics venue, I know, I believe when you were chair, two chairs ago, two terms ago, you worked with the city of LA when Garcetti was mayor to try to secure some of those venues. So was it, is it just the range shooting events that'll be held here or what other events?
It's the shooting venues. So there's airsoft, there's shotgun, and there, I believe there's pistol and rifle too. And what it is, is only two of us. There's LA location and our location that we submitted. I think our package far exceeds what the other private venue was going to offer, so I feel pretty good about it. Obviously, a lot of infrastructure still needs to go down there for that. It happened, it has to happen pretty soon because we started this, like you said, four years ago, and they haven't even made their decision yet. So it takes a while to actually build the facilities.
Well, I suspect they'll be making a decision relatively soon, given that the, well, I guess the final plans for 2028 have to be in relatively soon, given that France's Olympics will be done and the others have to be in stone. And then just a personal side note, please convey my thanks, and I would hope the thanks of my colleagues to your son Jonathan for his service overseas, and glad that he's back and finally home.
No, thank you. I was happy to get him back a week ago, so, his first deployment, so I'm proud of him. He did good stuff.
The apple didn't fall too far from the tree, so thank you both for your service in that regard.
Councilmember Rue?
Yes, although I had several things to talk about, I'll shorten us some time this evening. The, one of the big items for the city of Montclair is the Gold Line. As it moves from LA County into San Bernardino County, and then hopefully sometime way in the future, or maybe sooner, we can get it to the Ontario Airport. But, but to do that, we've got to get it to Montclair. One, I know you've said in the past that you support this, so I have to ask a question. Recently, SBCTA, of which you are a member, sent a letter to the Gold Line, basically said, "By April of 2025, the MTA has to have the funding in place." Or the funding that is sitting aside in San Bernardino County will be used for other things. Among them, in the letter, it listed the Bright Line. I thought the Bright Line was privately funded. Not happy about how it's being done, but that's all for another day. Can you work with SBCTA to let them understand the timeline is not realistic at this point?
We, your mayor and I both sit in that committee together, and I think he knows that I'm one of the more vocal supporters of the Gold Line. That's a commitment we made to our residents way back when, when we went out for the tax increase. We have that money there, is there. There is, I guess, negotiations as far as language of when the money goes, when it should be committed, based on when the LA Metro commits its bigger portion or not. They've indicated that they, they will, but they haven't actually actuated that yet. I think we're waiting to see that comes through first. I actually have a meeting with Basan, uh, next week to follow up on that. And I don't think I'm the only one here, but one of the ones trying to make that difference to SBCTA to fulfill our commitment. And I think they're going to need more than the 70 million we have aside for. They're going to need more for that, and I think there's enough support on the board to show, once there's a finite number that we can actually commit on, that we could try to, try to get that through as well. But it's like, what comes first, the car or the horse type of thing? And those are unfortunately, when our agency and SBCTA is used to doing our projects and being in charge of those, versus just saying, yes, we commit to this and we have no control over it. So some language issues that we'll work through. I'm work with, kind of like liaison between Gold Line and SBCTA to see if we can work some of those issues out. But I'm fully committed to continue to commit to that going forward.
Because, again, the April 25 deadline is really very difficult, and it is vital to our region, not just the city of Montclair, to the region, to have the Gold Line come through here.
We definitely need their infrastructure to come in.
Drive to Montclair, get on the Gold Line, and go to places they need to go to.
And Mr. Rue, I just want to commit that, yes, SBCTA is still committed to this project. SBCTA, we expecting some up in an update next, mid part of next year, where the fundings are and where the costs are. So it is still committed to SBCTA to this project.
I just, I just want to make clear how it is important to the region. Thank you.
Absolutely. Agree with you. Kurt?
Thank you for having me.
Next presentation is proclamation declaring April 26, 2024 as Arbor Day. I want to ask Monica, our public works director, to please come up. Where's Monica? Monica, you there? Monica, we've done this, how many years now?
15 years.
Great, very good. So again, obviously, trees are very important in Montclair. I appreciate all the hard work that you've done to bring trees to the future Reader Park. I know the Trails project also just has new, new trees added there, our Pacific Trail, North Montclair. And obviously, your department plays a big role in too ensuring that our trees in Montclair are well maintained, and, and at the same time, we're adding more trees as we can. So I'm going to give you this proclamation and to declare, hereby declare, proclaim April 26, 2024 as Arbor Day in the city of Montclair. Thank you.
Yeah, and can I just?
Let's take a, let's take a picture real fast, and then I'll let you.
Yeah, I just want to invite the community to come to our last two events to, to plant 57 more trees out of the 150 that we are planting this year. So our next event is next Friday on Arbor Day, National Arbor Day. It's going to be at Sunset Park. And the last event is on May 20, May 25th, to plant another 32. So so far, we planted eight trees at Saratoga Park, 23 at Reader Ranch, and 62 at the Pacific Electric Trail. So that's 93 total to date, and we'll do the planting of the remainder trees at those two events. So please go to our website to register if you want to volunteer and to add more trees to our community. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you very much.
Director Haridia?
I just have one, a couple little questions. On Friday at Sunset Park, at what time?
It starts at, registration starts at 8:30.
8:30, perfect.
Planting at around 9:00. There will be a demonstration on how to plant trees around 9:15.
Great. On May 25th at?
At Sunset Park.
At what time?
Sunset Park.
Same time. 8:30 for registration. 9 o'clock will start a demonstration about planting trees.
Thank you, Director Haridia.
Great. Thank you. Is this room a little warm for folks? We should reduce the AC a little bit? Yes? Okay, can we add, or staff can? Okay, thank you very much for that. Again, if members of the public want to speak tonight, this is a good time to submit your speaking cards. If you haven't already, do so. They're on my left, and you'll submit them on the right. And before we start with public comments, there's some things I want to start with. First of all, I'd like to apologize for my poor behavioral at the end of the last city council meeting towards my good colleague, Councilmember Martinez. Obviously, Councilmember Martinez has a right to introduce items to the city council that what she's done many times in the past, that she deems the community warrants it. After the city council meeting last Monday, I did text Council Martinez, apologized to her, and then the following day, we did have a chance to talk about it. And again, I apologized at that time and have a better understanding of her reasonings to make the motion. I've enjoyed, I haven't, I do enjoy working with Council Martinez ever since her appointment in 2019. She is truly a leader in our city, including her representing our younger generation of Montclair residents. Second of all, I'd like to ask the city clerk to introduce, briefly introduce, the titles of the two business item resolutions that are on the agenda. Andrea, can you please do that? And this is for the public information, so they're aware that there are two resolutions on the agenda.
Yes, the city council is being requested to consider adoption of one of the following two resolutions. Resolution number 24 dash 3433 affirming as a policy, the city council's practice to not act on matters considered the purview and maintenance of the state or national governments, and further to not consider or adopt resolutions, issue proclamations, or otherwise engage in discourse, or advocacy adverse to the interests of Montclair, or that would place the city council in the position of advocacy on matters outside the purview of local government, or that would potentially pit against each other factions or groups within Montclair, or that are otherwise not directly connected with the city council's governance or administration of the city, its provision of public services, or its objective to improve the quality of life for Montclair residents. The second resolution is resolution number 24 dash 3434 demonstrating support for the Biden administration's call for an immediate ceasefire to hostilities in the Israel-Gaza Strip conflict, and that specific concrete and measurable steps be taken to curb civilian casualties and prevent harm to aid workers, that all hostages, prisoners of war, and detainees be immediately returned to their respective states, and further that humanitarian aid be permitted to flow into the conflict-torn areas.
Okay, thank you very much. Andrea, how many public speakers cards do you have right now?
I had two comments submitted via email and 87 speaker cards submitted.
87 speakers? Okay. Yes, Mr. Lopez, did you want to say something?
I actually have a suggestion. I wasn't sure if you were going to go into this or not, but I'm assuming majority of those 87 speakers are to address the resolution item on the agenda. May I suggest that for any speaker that wants to address the body that, whose topic does not relate to the resolutions, that we take those during public comment. We then adopt the consent calendar.
Well, what I was going to suggest, a few councillors of mine, I think we're going to start with the public comment now. This is an opportunity for anybody in the public can speak on any item that's on the agenda or not on the agenda. I think with the number of speakers we have, I was going to limit that to two minutes. We did two minutes last time with 26 speakers. I think two minutes is still appropriate. And then, at some point, maybe, if it's now 7:25, perhaps at 8:30, we will stop the public comment, work on the public, excuse me, work on the consent calendar items, and then continue the public comment until we end the public comment. And then at that time, we can deal with the, the business items, which just relates to the two resolutions that we just introduced. Is that, is that, the council okay with that?
Would, would my colleagues be okay with asking those speakers who do not have a request in to speak on the resolution items, for them to go first and to? What I'm trying to get at is, I wouldn't want those issues pertaining other than the resolutions to be somehow mixed in or drowned out by the discussion on the resolution topic. That's my only.
Oh, I, I'm going to, I'm going to defer to the city clerk, since she's got quite a few speaking cards and how she wants to present it, or do you, do you have a category?
I think there's only one speaker who's not speaking on it, on the items, which was Bill Kaufman.
Okay, maybe Bill Kaufman can go first. And then from there, we will continue on with, I'm assuming no one wants, there's nobody here to speak on the pub, on the, on the, on the consent calendar items. No consent calendar items?
None specifically. Some just left it blank, though.
All right. So what we'll do then, it is, we will go to 8:30, and at 8:30, we will stop for a second, do the consent calendar, and go back to public comments. So again, it's two minutes. You can talk about anything you want within the two minutes. And, and Andrea, can you announce who the next two speakers are, so they know, they're aware of it?
Mr. Mayor, I have a concern. We have public comment on here, so that would be anybody addressing something not on the agenda. Then we have cards for people who wish to discuss an item on the agenda, which is the resolution.
Yeah.
So they'd be taken differently. Maybe we can do our public comment.
Okay. So.
And just follow the agenda as it is now.
Is that the wish of the council then?
Consent calendar, and then go into.
All right. Then we will do it that way then, if that's what the council's preview is, then. All right. Mr. Kaufman, you have 10 minutes to start with, sorry.
Oh, I missed you guys two weeks ago. I mean, I was sitting there Monday night, and I was getting anxiety, and I realized, Montclair City Council, it's always a fireworks. In any event, I just wanted to refresh you with me, mayor, council members. I want to let you know that we're still securing our anchors. It's becoming a little financially draining. Also, that your neighbor Pomona has already taken in over $1 million in tax revenue, probably projected for three. And we're ready, we'll enable it the second that you folks act on ordinance and start to issue some permits. And other than that, I just want to let all these people, I'm totally in agreeance with this genocide that's going on. And that's all I'll say. Thank you.
Thank you. So do we have any other speakers on non-gen items, Andrea?
None that I could identify.
Okay.
Carolyn, did you?
I'm sorry? Yeah, go ahead.
So all of us were under the assumption that we were just speaking during public comments because there is a portion of the law?
Yeah, you, you, yes, on the business items, yes.
Before the agenda.
Yeah, so we're gonna, since there's nobody else on.
I just wanted to.
Okay, come on up, Carolyn, and if you want to speak on.
On the first item on C, item C of the calendar.
On the consent calendar? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, and I said I'd really like to, the idea of purchasing two electric bikes. They are practical, helpful in going where the patrol cars can't go, or see while driving the streets and apprehending criminals, as well as the community will be able to approach them easy, easier face-to-face. People do like to talk to their police officers, and either thanking them or for protecting our community or concerns. So there are many advantages to have the officers on the bike versus a vehicle. I suppose, and I hope, they're not going to be on the bikes at nighttime, because that would not be very safe for the, the police officers themselves. So, okay. And then my next item is on.
Okay, on the next, okay, thank you. Okay, so with that, are we good, Andrea?
All right, are we going to move on to?
Yeah, we're going to now go on to the consent calendar then. And any items in the consent calendar, my colleagues want to move off my left, anybody?
Mayor, we might have another comment, I'm not sure.
Mayor, we might have another comment, I'm not sure.
Did you, I'm sorry, did you want to, did you fill out a speaking card?
Yeah, I did.
Okay, come on up.
I'll get his name. Could you say your name, too?
My name is Frank Sanchez, submitted a speaker card. Good evening, city council. My name is Frank Sanchez, I'm the director of community outreach and corporate social responsibility for Stizzy. Stizzy is one of the largest vertically integrated cannabis companies in the state of California. We operate 34 stores within the state. We look forward to the opportunity of possibly opening a retail storefront within the city of Montclair and being a great community partner. We pride ourselves in the community partnerships we commit to before opening any location, and we look forward to doing the same here in Montclair. Further, I invite everyone to visit one of our stores to be able to see what our day-to-day business is really like. The closest location to here is Stizzy Pomona off of Holt and Dudley. This location has benefited from the community improvements that have come directly with opening the storefront, which include 24-hour security, a well-lit parking lot and building, and a clean surrounding. I encourage the city to adopt an ordinance that encourages these businesses to operate within the commercial corridor of the city. This will not only help with the normalizing of cannabis and its sales, but further increase sales for the store and the tax revenues for the city. We have several stores that have opened commercials alone, such as Waldemar and Pomona, and they have, they are some of our better-performing stores. Stizzy looks forward to the day that we're able to submit an application here in Montclair, and I welcome any questions. Lastly, I thank everyone for considering bringing safe cannabis access to the residents of Montclair. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so I assume we're done with this portion of public comment. And now, I'll ask, any consent calendars on my left, pull? Anybody on the right, pull? Can I get a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move adoption of the consent calendar as presented.
I'll second that.
Can we get electronic vote, please? Okay, that was simple. Okay, next item is now business items. Again, those two items were introduced. So we will begin with public comment.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I have a question, I'm a little bit confused. So are we still on public comments?
We are now on public comments on the business items, and now we're gonna give everybody two minutes, an opportunity to speak. If you haven't submitted a speaking card, this is the time to do it. Since when we start, we're not going to accept any more speaking cards. So if you wish to speak, this is a great time to submit it, right now. Anybody? Anybody else out there? Okay. Okay Andrea, so if we can introduce the first speaker and maybe the next two speakers after that, that'd be great.
I did have some public comments from, that were submitted via email.
Oh, we'll start with those then, okay.
Okay, the first one is Sally Sanders. Dear councilmembers, I am writing to voice my support for a ceasefire resolution in Gaza. Please recognize that this genocide in Palestine does indeed affect us here in SoCal. If we don't have a ceasefire soon, it appears that we will be headed into World War III. That affects us all, none of us are free until we are all free. And the next comment is from Pastor Josh Matlock. Montclair should not get involved with international politics. That is not why the people elected this body. And if you were to decide to get involved in international politics, one would have to ask, why now? Why this conflict? And if you do decide to now enter the business of resolution-making regarding international politics, believe me, the one you are considering would not be supported by all people. You will alienate many. It isn't worth setting this precedent now for something that is deeply divisive and has little relevance. Let us pray for peace in the Middle East, but let Montclair Council focus its attention on the affairs in Montclair. And now on to the speakers. First is Bernice Navarro, followed by Catherine Laura.
Thank you so much for accepting our comments tonight. I am 1,000% in support of resolution number 24-3433. I think that that's a sound, wise move in this day and age. Regarding resolution 24-3434, I'm a strong supporter of any country that's going to defend its sovereignty. So I am totally in support of Israel and not in support of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, Catherine Laura, followed by Tom Long.
Thank you, city council, for allowing us for comment. I wanted to speak with you, not as a resident, but as somebody that comes to Montclair and spends a lot of money shopping, Costco, restaurants, movies and such. And so, to me, a city should not be getting involved in geopolitical issues. That is not what you've been elected for, that is not what we are here for, that is not what affects our cities. But when you get into such resolutions as 24-3434, it becomes divisive. And especially as an American Jew, with all the antisemitism that has occurred, this propels this even more into our world that we don't need here. And so I ask that you pass 24-3433 as a reasonable resolution that really reflects what you, as a city, should be doing. Thank you.
Right, next is Tom Long, followed by Enrique Guzman.
There's a saying that states, those that don't study history are doomed to repeat it. What's happening in Gaza is tragic. Innocent people are dying. The culprit in this conflict is not the Palestinian people of Gaza. The culprit is the terrorist regime called Hamas. The everyday people are suffering due to the actions of Hamas on October 7 of last year. Consider these facts from history. On October 23, 1983, the terrorist group Hezbollah killed 241 US military personnel in the truck bombing of the Marine Corps barracks in Beirut, Lebanon. Minutes later, a second suicide bomber killed 58 French paratroopers. Former Secretary of State Henry Kissinger declared, and I'm paraphrasing, "The problem needs to be eliminated." He was not speaking of the Lebanese people, but of the Iranian-funded terrorist regime of Hezbollah. The United States was not victorious in the war in Vietnam. Thousands of US soldiers died without changing the outcome of the aggression from the north, because the mission was not completed. It was abandoned. The US pulled out of the country, but the fighting continued. Only by the grace of God were my own two brothers kept from going to Vietnam. In World War II, President Harry Truman ordered the atomic bomb to be dropped on Japan. One criterion of the target selection was that it must be a city primarily devoted to military production. This was complicated, however, because in Japan, workers' homes were intermingled with factories so that it was impossible to find a target that was exclusively military. Truman did not seek to destroy Japanese culture or people. The goal was to destroy Japan's ability to make war. This is exactly what Israel faces today. Hamas's weapons of war are camouflaged in houses and hospitals. They're using civilians as human shields. Truman continued his pursuit of the enemy, and after the second bomb was dropped on Nagasaki, the.
Thank you, sir, thank you. Your two minutes is up. Thank you.
Next is Enrique Guzman, followed by Lonnie Marion.
Hello, council members. My name is Enrique, I'm a Montclair resident. And I'd like to just speak briefly on the agenda 10, 24, 34, 33, in regards to the city to focus in our community and to continue to improve the quality of life in Montclair. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Lonnie Marion, followed by Jane McTarsney.
Thank you, council members, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few comments to make on these agenda items. First, it should be understood that Hamas committed an act of war against Israel. And now you're considering a vote to tell people of Israel, they cannot defend themselves. It's not right. It's ludicrous. You're just playing into the hands of terrorists if you pass the resolution, legitimizing and glorifying the atrocities perpetuated by Hamas and showing no empathy for the Jewish population in the United States and within the local community. These pro-Hamas advocates have crossed the line and demonstrated nothing but antisemitism. I ask you, what about the threats that we've seen against the city council? If you don't pass this resolution for the ceasefire, then they're going to keep pounding on you. That's what I've seen. Is that right? Is that civil? These pro-terrorist groups are demanding a one-sided ceasefire. The best and most reasonable response at this time is to consider all of your constituents. Affirm the policy of not placing the city council in support of one faction against the other, because passing a resolution for a ceasefire will do just that, and it will spread and encourage antisemitism within the community of Montclair and the surrounding communities. And one further statement. Well, I guess that's it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Is Diane McTarsney, followed by Caitlin McTarsney.
Thank you, council members, for taking public comment today. On September 11, 2001, terrorists surprised attacked the US by turning commercial flights into weapons of mass murder. A strategic and concerted, well-planned terrorist attack against the citizens of our country, hitting the Twin Towers and Pentagon, leaving 2,977 Americans dead. Wives, husbands, fathers, mothers, children, grandparents, sons, daughters massacred in the deadliest terrorist attack in human history. The attack was met with resolve to bring the terrorists, their funding organizations, and nations to justice. We are a sovereign nation defending herself against your enemies. We, as a nation, responded in kind after the bombing of Pearl Harbor. And that is why we entered World War II. On October 7, 2023, Hamas terrorists infiltrated the sovereign nation of Israel to murder and terrorize innocent civilians. Hamas was merciless in their brutality, wreaking havoc and destruction in what can be only described as pure evil. Babies were shot in their cribs, women were brutally raped repeatedly, concert-goers were mowed down and murdered. The executioners filmed their horror and torture and sent it to the victims' families and posted it, the carnage, on social media. This was not a military campaign against a nation at war. Remember, Israel was in the midst of peace talks. This was a heinous act of terror with the intent on demoralizing a people. 240 citizens of all ages were kidnapped, 160 of whom are still held against their will. 1,200 civilians were murdered. It is appalling and arrogant that we, as the United States and city of Montclair, would even consider to take it upon ourselves to tell a sovereign nation how they should respond to these acts of terror, to their people on their land. We are nothing more than hypocrites if we endorse any type of ceasefire. I implore you to adopt resolution 24-3433.
Mr. Mayor, could you please? Could you please address the audience regarding respect and dignity of a speaker? Not shouting from the audience, not shouting to us at the dais, could you please address that, please?
Mr. Lopez, I think, I think, I think we're all excited to be here this evening. This is an emotional item, I'm aware of it. And I think we all understand the need to respect all speakers, even if you don't like what they say. Let's just respect each other's speakers and everybody have a chance to speak. That's the whole goal here. Sorry for, it's all yours, excuse me.
Thank you. Hello, city council, thank you for having us. On October 7, 2023, a terrorist group Hamas brutally attacked Israel. They raped women, burned children, and filmed it all for the world to see. Israel, being its own sovereign nation, has the right to defend itself. America should not have involvement in another nation's choice of retaliation. The city of Montclair should only be handling the affairs of Montclair. I urge you to affirm resolution 24-3433. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Joseph McTarsney, followed by Somar Khalif.
Good evening. I'd like to speak on agenda item number 10, letter A, that concerns adoption of resolution number 24-3433. I highly affirm that our city council do adopt resolution number 23-3433 and focus in on our city and our local affairs and continue to enrich the quality of life in our community. Resolution number 24-3434 will be saying that Israel should not defend herself when they have, they have the right to do so as a sovereign nation, and they have a right to respond in the light of the terrorist attacks against them on October the 7. When 9/11 occurred on our land, we responded, and so should Israel. I implore you to adopt resolution number 24-3433 and continue to concentrate on our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Khalif, followed by Fernando.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I stand before you today as a passionate advocate for justice and humanity. Our discussion today delves into the uncomfortable reality that our hard-earned tax dollars are being funneled into conflict overseas, leaving a trail of devastation and despair in their wake. But why should we be concerned? It's simple. Our moral fabric of our nation demands it. As stewards of our community's values, we cannot idly watch as our resources are squandered on violence while our own neighborhoods cry out for support and compassion. In my role as a devoted social worker, I witnessed the transformative power of empathy and solidarity. Yet as we convene here today, it's clear that our priorities are skewed. We must reclaim our commitment to compassion and recognizing that it knows no borders and transcends political divides. Let us not shy away from our responsibility to hold those in positions of authority accountable. Let us redirect our focus towards where our community needs are met with dignity and respect. For in the end, our legacy will not be measured by the weapons we wield, but by the compassion we extend to our fellow human beings. And so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next is Fernando, followed by Jessica Gaitan.
Good evening, council, my name is Fernando. I am a lifelong Californian, born and raised here in California. The only time I left was to serve four years in the Marine Corps, to include a seven-month deployment to Fallujah, Iraq. I come here today not only to stand in solidarity with my comrades and your constituents in support of item number 24-3434, but also to denounce Mayor Dutrie's behavior from last council meeting. We all saw last council meeting's video, where Mayor Dutrie got up out of his seat and attempted to intimidate a fellow council member. Not only is it uncalled for and unprofessional, it is also unconstitutional. This isn't a one-man show. These meetings are meant to be democratic. Overbearing and intimidating behavior is not democratic. I also want to address a comment he made regarding ceasefire resolution not being a local issue. Of course it's a local issue, or all these people wouldn't be here. Of course it's a local issue, it's our taxpayer money funding this genocide. If it wasn't a local issue, you wouldn't have so many cities all across the country passing ceasefire resolutions. I also want to address some of the council member, council member Lopez's big verbal sewage that he spilled during the last meeting. He mentioned that before October 7, Jews, Muslims, and Christians lived peacefully side by side. Yes, maybe, if you lived in Israel. If you, if you lived in Palestine, you were subject to an open-air concentration camp where Israel controlled and continues to control Palestinian air, land, and sea. I encourage everyone to watch a documentary called Israelism. It exposes it all. Have a good evening, thank you.
All right, Jessica Gaitan, followed by Tansin Sultana.
Good evening, my name is Jessica Gaitan, and I have been a Montclair resident for 25 years. And I'm here tonight in support of resolution 24-3434. And I would also like to thank Councilmember Martinez for attempting to. for attempting to put it on the agenda at least two times. And I can't help but express some disappointment in the rest of the council's resistance to even consider it. It's been seven months since the beginning of the genocide, and the only reason why our ceasefire resolution is on the agenda tonight is because you have a counter-resolution. Yes, matters such as fixing potholes, maintaining facilities, and parks and wrecks are part of your civil duties. Most importantly, as public servants, you are meant to serve and listen to your constituents. For the past few weeks, the majority have given you statistics and narratives on the horrific acts of violence being conducted by the OAF on innocent Palestinians. Montclair does not exist in a bubble. The Palestinian struggle is connected to the liberation of all people, including those living in Montclair and San Bernardino County. The IOF and police in the U.S. share, quote, "best practices" and commit brutality onto Black and Brown people. Just earlier this year, San Bernardino County murdered a Black 15-year-old. So I'm just trying to draw the connections on how it matters here locally. And also, about $363,000 of Montclair's tax money goes, supports the IOF. On the other side of the world, all of that money could be used instead to invest onto our communities. I hope that you lead with compassionate humanity and pass Resolution 243434 tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Next is, sorry. Next is Tansin Sultana followed by Alejandra.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. First of all, I have to correct two things besides what I wrote. Number one, this didn't start October 7th. So if we started at October 7th, we're getting this all wrong. This is something that's been going on for 75 years. I myself am an Indian Muslim living here in California for almost three decades, and I will urge the council to please remember that while we're looking at this situation, we can't distance ourselves from it because we've been forced to be dragged into it. The reason we've been dragged into it is this is not about two sovereign nations. Palestine, the nation of Palestine, has been slowly been consumed and taken little by little by Israel, and this is what's been happening for so long. So what we are now in a situation is we are the country that's giving all the weapons to destroy those people there. We are the country that is giving the funding for it. We're the country that's telling them, "We are here to help you and support you." So we are all, by nature, by default, dragged into this conflict. So again, I am not Palestinian, but I withstand with the Palestinians, and I urge the council to please. We're not taking sides with Hamas. We're not even taking sides with Israel. We're asking for the stopping of the killing of over 30,000 people who are predominantly women and children who have nothing to do with this in the name of Hamas. We have always used the name of terrorism to cause more destruction and damage in many countries. History has taught us that. Look at any nation. Look at Vietnam. Look at anything we've done in Iraq. Iraq was not in charge of the World Trade Center bombings, but Iraq and Afghanistan had to pay the price. And we know that innocent people have repeatedly been killed throughout history. So I call that we not only call for ceasefire, but we release the 130-plus Israeli hostages and over the 4,500 Palestinian prisoners, many of whom are children. To be, please, released. This is not a political stance. It's a humanitarian stance. We need to support this resolution and make sure we call for ceasefire because we're part of it.
Next, Alejandra followed by Huda.
Okay, hello. My name is Alejandra. Typically, I don't write my speeches. I kind of listen to what everybody says and, you know, think about what I want to say. So earlier, somebody quoted Kissinger. And let me see. Where was my quote that I wanted to read? Well, basically, Kissinger was a war criminal. And so why are we quoting Kissinger? Just that didn't make sense. And then October 6th, let's think about, okay, we're talking about October 7th. October 6th, an Israeli settler killed a family teen. His name, or Labib Demaidi. So just, you know, yeah. It didn't start on October 7th. October 6th, Israeli settlers go into the, you know, West Bank and are killing Palestinians. So, you know, is that not terrorism? And then the mother had to deal with snipers pointing their guns at her house on the 6th of October. So, yeah, just wanted to bring that up. I am in support of a ceasefire resolution. And if you guys choose to censor your constituents from bringing any topic up, you know, that's just really bad on you guys because, you know, everybody's like, "Oh, why this? Why now?" You can bring up anything you want at any time, everybody. So this right here, right now, is a very critical, important time in history right now. And, yeah, you will go down in history as very racist. Zionism is racism.
Next is Huda followed by Zain.
I'm speaking on behalf of someone else. Honorable members of the city council, my name is Ahmed, and I stand before you today as a voice for those who are suffering in silence, caught in the crossfire of conflict and oppression. I'm a Palestinian-Canadian residing here in Montclair, but my heart and my family are still in Gaza, a place torn apart by violence and despair. I left Gaza in search of a safer place, but my family remains trapped, unable to escape the horrors that besiege our homeland. For far too long, they have endured the ravages of war, forced to flee from one makeshift shelter to another as their homes are destroyed by bombs and flames of the Israeli occupation army. The plan and anguish of loss weigh heavy upon my heart. Just two months ago, I lost my sister to the senseless violence that plagues our land. And before her, my cousin and his young son were taken from us. Their lives cut short by the indiscriminate cruelty of war. Last month, my grandfather passed away. His life extinguished not by old age, but by the lack of medical care and essential medication that has become all too common in Gaza. A tank ran over my wife's aunt and her children and her grandchildren, killing them all.
Take your time. Take your time.
Killing them all without mercy.
Hebra. Take a Hebrew.
My wife also lost her cousins in 2014 in an Israeli airstrike. There were kids. The oldest was nine years old, and the youngest was four years old. And now, as I stand here before you, my brother lies in a hospital bed, fighting for his life after being shot by an Israeli sniper. The agony of his injuries is compounded by the scarcity of medical supplies and the absence of proper care. Imagine undergoing surgery for a life-threatening wound without the comfort of anesthesia, without the assurance of swift recovery. This is the reality that my family faces every day, a reality defined by pain, suffering, and loss. In the past six months alone, we have mourned the deaths of over 30 members of our extended family, each one a tragic reminder of the senseless brutality of war. But this is not just our story. It is the story of countless others who have endured the same unimaginable suffering. I stand before you today to implore you, as representatives of this community, to take a stand against the genocide that is unfolding in Gaza. I urge you to use your influence and your voice to call for an immediate ceasefire for any demand and to the bloodshed and the destruction that has plagued our homeland for far too long. The people of Gaza are not statistics or casualties of war. They are mothers and fathers, sons and daughters, friends and neighbors. They deserve to live in peace and.
All right, next speaker is.
Ma'am, on behalf of the city council, we give your condolences to your family. That's a very tragic situation that you're going through.
All right, the next speaker is Zain followed by Jimmy Crowell.
Council, I was listening. I made a speech, but after listening to some people, I decided to address some of the comments made. People quoted 9/11, Vietnam, or, I wish these people read some history. Violence has never resolved anything in the last 50 years, whether in Vietnam, Afghanistan, Iraq, or Libya. Wherever we have intervened, our interventions have literally left us more unsafe than ever. We literally took Afghanistan from Taliban's and handed it back to them. So unless your campaigns are being funded by military-industrial complex or you own stocks in weapons manufacturers, there's no way supporting ceasefire will harm you in any way. Don't forget, supporting ceasefire means supporting the U.S. president. It's part of the resolution. Supporting 150-plus international countries. Supporting many Jewish voices. Orthodox Jews who have been asking for ceasefire. Holocaust survivors and their families have been asking for ceasefire. American veterans have asked for ceasefire. Ex-ITF members have asked for ceasefire. Over 75% as per the latest survey asked for ceasefire. Even the families of Israeli hostages have asked for ceasefire. I mean, it just doesn't make sense if you just all label them as anti-Semitic. Some Zionist supporters and sympathizers may argue, "Why should Montclair even concern itself with a geopolitical issue?" Well, to answer those people, this is not any other geopolitical issue. We pay $3.8 billion to Israel. The moment apicious taxes are handed over to the apartheid state of Israel, we all become complicit, and it becomes a local issue. $3.8 billion amounts to $300 million per month, $73 million per week, and $10 million per day. You are the only forum where your constituents can raise their voice. We have emailed called the council, our senators and congresspeople, but you guys are our only direct voice. Hopefully, if you actually become our voice, they would listen as well. Vote for ceasefire. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jimmy Crowell followed by Mike Cargill.
Good evening, Mayor and council. First of all, I am a Christian man in support of Israel. I'm a veteran. I'm a grandfather. I'm a husband. I'm a father. And it is tragic what's going on in the Middle East. I think we should all stop and pray for the things that are going on there. But Israel was violently attacked, and they do have the right to defend themselves and to retaliate. As Americans, as was spoken earlier, that's what you do when you're attacked. And as a soldier of the United States Army, that's what I would do. I would defend my family.
Thank you.
I would defend my family. And I believe that the City of Montclair should be allowed to focus on the things of Montclair. You guys have enough going on here that we don't need to focus on world things. There are people that are in positions to do those things. And I am here in support of Resolution 24-3433. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next is Mike.
That, let's show respect for all speakers. Everybody has a right to speak their minds, even if you don't like it. Please don't interrupt them. They should not interrupt you when you're speaking as well. And we'll continue on. Thank you.
All right, Mike Cargill followed by Matthew Munson.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. I'm Mike Cargill. I am the federal candidate in this area for the House of Representatives. I apologize it's taken me so long to get over here and introduce myself, but I had a primary I had to get through. So my comments tonight are not directed mainly at you, but all these wonderful people behind me. These people who have a right to have their voices heard. Even if we disagree with them, they have this right, and we support that absolutely. But I'm gathering that the real frustration is you don't have any place to turn to. See, the issue we're dealing with here is not a city issue. It's not even a state issue. This is a federal issue, and you've got zero support from the federal government. Well, I'm here to say, please deal with me. Don't deal with these city councils. My city councils have cities to run. They can not impact this issue, but my voice in Washington, D.C. could. My voice will be very, very important should I get elected to this office. So what I would propose, and I appeal to you, I would like to put together something of a consortium of voices, and then we'll draft a statement that represents the nine cities of the 35th district. And then we will submit them both to President Trump and to President Biden. And then we'll see who acts on it. Because we used to have peace in the Middle East, didn't we? We had peace in the Middle East, and it was through the Abraham Accords, but something changed. Let's get back to that place. I support the Trump agenda in the Middle East because I support, more than anything, peace in the Middle East. God bless you all. Thank you for allowing me to talk.
Let's have our next speaker, please.
Yes, Matthew Munson.
I'm sorry, sir, this is a, sir.
Ask him a question?
No, you can ask him a question if you want outside in the lobby if you like, but we're technically supposed to be doing public comments right now.
It's a really short question.
This is not, no, 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 no. He can go on the public comment. This is not a public forum. So the next speaker, please.
Matthew Munson followed by Celeste Guerrero.
Reading, city council and mayor. My name is Matthew Munson. As someone who lives a half a mile from Montclair, I believe there is more productive issues discussed than an issue a half a world away that our local officials have little or no power to deal with. For example, Montclair. How do we deal with the empty anchor stores at Montclair Place that used to be here? Perhaps we could ask Chief College Health and Cosmetic Program at the mall to help build traffic. And it says ceasefire is irrelevant because local electives from school boards to city councils have no power. Please lobby your congress critters instead or your candidates running for those offices. Israel has been a good nation to many of the marginalized people and treats women and the LGBT community fairly, unlike surrounding countries. As a gay Latino man, I'm proud to support them. Israel is the canary in the coal mine when it comes to Western civilization, where Christians, women, and homosexuals are be threatened when Israel gets sunk. I support Resolution 243433 because we want local governments to be inclusive and not to alienate demographic groups. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Next is Celeste Guerrero followed by Sandra Crowell.
Hello. In the last meeting, you talked about us focusing on Montclair economy. But isn't sending money to Israel part of Montclair's economy? Instead of sending money to Israel for war, we can be using it to improve schools, healthcare, roads, houses, churches, education, and overall improve the city's well-being. I know many of you don't think the ceasefire resolution is a Montclair matter, but it is. Citizens of Montclair care about this cause. We continuously fight for a ceasefire. Over 30,000 people have been killed in this war for land, the same amount of people living in Montclair around it, too. All we're asking you to do is second in a ceasefire resolution. We know that this might not be your priority, but people in the world living in Palestine, the Congo, Syria, Iraq, Lebanon, Egypt, Jordan, have no place to go, no food to eat, no healthcare, no way to stay safe. This is genocide, and we should not stand by and watch the lives of these people be taken. We're asking you, please, stand up for what's right. This is not racism towards Israeli or Jewish people in any way. This is a ceasefire resolution for all sides of this war. To stop fires, stop support from America, stop funding Israel in this war. We should not support this genocide, this ethnic cleansing. What we should support is peace. We should support people being able to hug their families, eat, have healthcare, have a place to sleep, and not have to worry about if or when they're going to be killed. If you were one of these families and you had a chance to make change, would you? If you were going through what they were going through, would you? We've all collectively gathered here today. My question is, why can't you? And regarding the American support of Israel, Israel already has enough arms for themselves. In fact, they just attacked Syria because there's a province that Iraq holds. Iraq fought back, and Israel took the bombs down immediately. They don't need the support from America. And even teachers in school are arguing about this issue, and it's a Montclair issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Sandra Crowell followed by Dr. Sharon Stein.
General, city council, and the mayor. Mayor, I did hear that you apologized, so that I don't think was noticed by many here. I do stand for Israel. I have kept up with what's going on in Israel and Gaza. I was, um... Israel was attacked. Babies, women. Babies, women, men were killed. Hostages were taken. Israel has a right to defend itself. Even before they decided to go into Gaza to protect themselves and get their hostages, Hamas was bombing Israel. If Hamas had not continued to bomb Israel and had given up the hostages, none of this would have happened. But people are asking Israel to lay down their weapons. And yet they still have the hostages and Hamas is still bombing them. So I'm not understanding why people don't understand that. Now, they have been escorting humanitarian trucks in with food and medical supplies, but Hamas is stealing those trucks so they don't get to the people. Shh. So who's really at fault here? Israel? No. If Israel tried to lay down their weapons, it would be genocide. So I am in support of Israel. And I am asking that you support the Resolution twenty-four thirty-four thirty-three because I do not believe that Montclair should be involved in what's going on in the federal government. Montclair should be concerned about their citizens and what's going on here with their citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is Dr. Sharon Stein, followed by Carolyn, did you still want to speak on this?
I'm Sharon Stein.
You still want to speak? Okay, followed by Carolyn Raft.
Hello, Mayor Dufry, City Council members and City Clerk. I'm going to read this very quickly. As a member of the Jewish community, I'm here again to implore the mayor and city council not to adopt any social or political issues. They don't have anything to do with this beautiful city of Montclair. Again, you will be opening Pandora's box. I've been at this podium before, and I'll come again. I just want to say to the folks here who have the Arafat scarfs on, the history of Arafat and Clinton's summit reflects that the PLO was given almost everything in a peace agreement, including land and trade. And Arafat said, no, no, no. He would not know what to do with peace. The ceasefire is up to Hamas's leader, Sinwar. Call him, who is holding hostages somewhere in a three-hundred-mile tunnel built with cement that Israelis gave them to build a better infrastructure. Call him, not American entities. No American entity can successfully ask terrorists to lay down their arms. If you adopt a Simona College also agrees. I implore the Montclair City Council to codify the city's longstanding practice of refraining from and weighing in on social and political issues that are not local to the beautiful city of Montclair, which I love. Please adopt the Resolution twenty-four thirty-four thirty-three, similar to what Clermont did. Thank you so much.
Next is Carolyn Raft, followed by Guy Booke.
Good evening once again. Okay. I do hope this council will adopt Resolution number twenty-four thirty-four thirty-three, which is more practical. We have multiple people of both nationalities living in Montclair, as well as all over the country. If you approve Resolution twenty-four dash thirty-four thirty-four, our residents will be divided and upset with the council. This is really a no-win-win situation. We now have the Iranian government getting involved by sending drones into Israel with missiles, and they are warning all the other countries not to get involved. As we all know, the Iranian government, not the people, are one hundred percent against our country. As of now, everything is up in the air, and we don't know where all of this is going as of yet. I commend all of the young people showing up at our last council meeting and this council meeting expressing their opinion. And I do hope they stay involved with our city government and that they understand that council members' involvement with something other than the city government is not practical. Who knows, perhaps someday, maybe one of them will become a council member. So therefore, our council members have to be considerate of all our residents on the decisions that they make. I know this council has been thinking all of this over very carefully in their minds because this is not an easy decision. So please, everyone, respect that decision that they make on this night. Thank you.
Next is Guy Booke, followed by Noor Abdallah.
Mayor, City Council, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. I see a lot of passion in this room. I see some signs that say "free" on there. There's only one way to be free, and that's by the blood of Jesus Christ. He suffered and died on the cross for all people of the world. And so, just to make people feel not afraid or fear, we've also heard a lot of history of bloodshed in this country. Other countries, has it ever stopped? No. It's because of sin in the world. Because man's fallen short of the glory of God. In Luke, chapter twenty-one, verse nine through eleven, Jesus says, "But when you hear of wars and commotions, do not be terrified; for these things must come to pass first, but the end will not come immediately." Then he said to them, "Nation will rise against nation, and kingdom against kingdom, and there will be great earthquakes in various places, and famines and pestilences, and there will be fearful sights and great signs from heaven." My prayer tonight is for all sides to come to the knowledge of Jesus Christ as Savior. Thank you, Council.
Next is Noor Abdallah, followed by Rayanna Williams.
Hello, Council members. Thank you for listening to me speak today. First thing I would like to request is that Resolution number twenty-four dash thirty-four thirty-four be moved up ahead of Resolution twenty-four thirty-four thirty-three as it would deeply impact the majority of speakers here today and also the community that you represent. Addressing the counter resolution momentarily, I personally don't think it's outlandish to want your city to be concerned primarily with city matters. I think that's valid, but that only works if Montclair exists in a vacuum, and it doesn't. You can demand that, as long as you also demand that none of the money the city uses be complicit in the same international conflict you say you want no involvement in. If you are truly this concerned with a hands-off approach, you'd demand divestment. This necklace I'm wearing has been in my family for generations. Before it was mine, it belonged to multiple women in my lineage. It started with my great-great-grandma. It's well over a hundred years old, and it was made in my village in Palestine before the illegal settler colonial state of Israel even existed. Not only my great-great-grandma, but also my great-grandma and my grandma and my necklace are older than the state of Israel. This necklace has survived the Nakba, the initial mass exodus and massacre of Palestinians of nineteen forty-eight. I implore you to read up on the Nakba and the events that came before and after it. This necklace is a representation of the seventy-five-plus years of illegal occupation. Before we could see this genocide on our screens, we've been living it for years. We've been begging for justice for decades. We've been begging for a ceasefire for that long. And we especially have been begging for it for the past six months. Israel has violated a record number of humanitarian laws, and it would be a true embarrassment to the city of Montclair to stand by that or take a stance of neutrality. Desmond Tutu, a Nobel Peace Prize winner and a key figure in opposing South African apartheid, once said, "If you are neutral in situations of injustice, you have chosen the side of the oppressor." I would like you to keep that in mind. It's also incredibly ignorant to act as though the community is not impacted. Your community is outraged at the fact that our hard-earned tax dollars are funneled into mass murder. Silence is complicit. Silence is violent. A ceasefire demands the safety of all humanitarian workers, journalists, doctors, and civilians. We have nothing to lose by voting for a ceasefire, only the safety of the Gazan people and a peace of mind and clear conscience of our community. Join Atlanta, Chicago, Detroit, Sacramento, Seattle, San Francisco, and many more in demanding a ceasefire. Also, please, Council members, you're hearing a lot of opposing views and information. Do your own research with reputable sources. I don't mean new-
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next is Rayanna Williams, followed by Elvis Caceres.
Okay. First things first, I would like to request that Resolution twenty-four thirty-four thirty-four be moved up ahead of Resolution twenty-four thirty-four thirty-three. Assalamualaikum, everyone. Peace be upon you and hello. My name is Rayanna Williams. I am half Palestinian and half African-American. There's a saying amongst us Palestinians, and it's the phrase "adi", which literally means "it's fine, it's not a big deal", and it's said pretty frequently, even when it shouldn't. It's used as a reassurance to us that we'll survive. It was "adi" when the Jews came to Palestine fleeing persecution, and we welcomed them with open arms, saying "adi, stay as long as you'd like". It was "adi" when they slowly began taking our homes. It was "adi" when they began killing our people. It was "adi" when they stole and destroyed our beautiful land and began ethnically cleansing and displacing us. It's "adi" when little boys stand at the entrance of their village waiting for Israeli tanks to leave so that they can throw rocks with no means of protection for themselves. It's "adi" when our grandparents, our cousins, our aunts and uncles, who were born and raised in Palestine, are never able to return because they have a Hawia, which is a Palestinian citizenship. Because that's what it means to be a Palestinian, to be okay in times where absolutely nothing is okay. I'm in a space such as this where I'm heavily surrounded by people with an intense desire for justice. I'm reminded that we have not lost and we will continue to aspire. But in order to aspire to the fullest extent, we need to make sure that the people that represent us in the city are overcome with the same sense of justice and responsibility as us. Today, I am here to urge you to call for an immediate ceasefire. It has been six months and one week, one hundred ninety-one days, and four thousand five hundred eighty-four hours of mental, physical, emotional torture on Palestinians. More than thirteen thousand children have died since October seventh, and we will not brush it aside, and it is not "adi", just because they don't live in the same country as us. We care first and foremost because we are humans with equal value, and we should not and will not view a Palestinian life as inferior to a Jewish life. And second, because our-
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Next speaker is Elvis Caceres, followed by Paul Sanvianes.
I'd like to clarify that I would want Resolution two-four thirty-four thirty-four to be moved ahead of twenty-four thirty-four thirty-three. I wasn't here for the prior meeting in which the mayor had lashed out on the council members. But when that video came to my attention, I and many others came to the consensus that the mayor has no concern for the mental well-being or comfort of any of his colleagues or citizens. This resolution, specifically number twenty-four thirty-four thirty-three, intends to spin a narrative in which a ceasefire would only benefit the Palestinian militant group, when in fact, a ceasefire would benefit everyone besides our military-industrial complex. Funny enough, the mayor's blind rage and swiftness to silence his colleagues who disagree with him has proved even further that the ongoing conflict not only has a hold on our community, but lingers in the mind of our mayor. The only logical solution would be to pass a ceasefire resolution that clarifies and fulfills safety for all parties involved in hopes of ending the ever-escalating war in the region, which only serves to divide. With that said, I hope the council takes into mind that if they pass this deceitful resolution, which is thirty-four thirty-three, I and many other Montclair residents will reconsider your loyalty to this community. Thank you.
All right, Paul, then followed by Reyna Ramirez.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I've been a resident of this city for forty-five years. You know, I've come here and paid my bills and done what I was supposed to do. And I just feel that the city council needs to do what it has to do, to take care of the city of Montclair and not get involved with international politics and just keep it local, you know? Let them worry about it. They're the ones involved. They bring it down on themselves. People have to defend themselves. And that's the way it works, all throughout history, you know? We could go back and say, what about the Native Americans? What about the Chicanos? You know, what about the Black Americans? What about that, you know? But I don't know about-
All right. Sir, can you please address the council, sir?
All right, so that's all I got to say. I just ask that you not, that you not vote for, pass a resolution for a ceasefire against Israel. Just let it go and let them be and let them do what they have to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Reyna Ramirez, followed by Rabbi Shalom Harlig.
I just want to say that Mayor Dudley's behavior the last several months has been misogynistic and disrespectful. That's great that you apologize to Councilmember Martinez, but he needs to apologize for his behaviors towards women and the youth engaging in civic activity. The mayor needs to also be investigated for allowing white supremacists to have longer speaking times that night when they were Zoom bombed. I was here. It was horrible. You owe us all an apology for that. I wouldn't, I also wouldn't be surprised if he dog-whistled them online like he did for the Zionists on Facebook recently. I'm aged in history, so anyone here who's claiming that Israel's defending themselves is being willfully ignorant about the Nakba and that Israel has funded Hamas. Before the British mandate, Jews, Christians, and Muslims were able to coexist. Europe just hated Jews so much that they supported a colonized state. I was raised in the church, so I'm well aware how white supremacy has worked hard to pass Zionism as Christian, but it's not. Western Christians love to erase the fact that Palestinians have been Christian long before their pagan ancestors were. Yet where were their outcry from the likes of John Hagee for Christian Palestinians during the bombings of Gazan churches? Where were they when Christian Palestinians couldn't attend Christmas or Easter services? Vote no on Resolution thirty-four thirty-three. Stand with humanity. Don't pull a Clermont. Their lack of compassion and integrity has caused a rise in hate and hostility from Zionists. Their actions have only emboldened Zionists to cause harm to the students there. Don't bring that atmosphere here. Vote yes on Resolution thirty-four thirty-four. Recognize that you need to get our voices to the federal government who are not listening because they're being paid by AIPAC. This is not just a world issue. This is a local issue. Hatred and violence from Zionists is on the rise, especially towards queer, trans, and BIPOC people. There's no pride in apartheid. From the river to the sea, ceasefire now.
Shalom Harlig, followed by Chaney Harlig.
Good evening. I didn't come with any prepared speeches tonight. I just want to let you know that I'm a rabbi in the community for thirty-six years, helping people from the Muslim religion, from the Christian, from the Catholic, all different religions, atheists. But we have to make sure that we take care of the local problems because as a rabbi, I see there's more and more death locally from drugs. Homeless people are calling us more problems and so on and so forth. And as we don't get involved, what's going on in Iran, in Iraq, in Russia, in Africa, there's more and more people getting killed in Africa, and Africans fighting against each other, getting killed. We have all these problems. It's sad, and I lived in those countries and I helped those people. But as a rabbi, I want to say that killing Jews for thousands of years in Israel and before the Israeli army was established in nineteen twenty-eight, one day they woke up, there was thirty Jews living in the city of Hebron. They took axes and they chopped off the heads of all the men and women and children. And I'm praying, and we saw the other day. I'm a rabbi for thirty-six years in the city of inland empires and the surrounding cities. And I came to the city council meeting, and I never, ever heard, thought that I would see that. Twelve people were speaking on Zoom. Each one cursed out Israel, cursed out the Jews, cursed out the African-American people. Where are we all going? What's happening? Unbelievable. I felt hurt seeing pictures of city council people, good people, trying to make the world a better place. Pictures against us. I don't want to say who I saw exactly from the city. X's on your face, bad words on your face. What's going on with our society? We have such beautiful energy and power in the room. Let's all do it the right way. Make sure Montclair High School kids go to class every day, learn, get a career. Crime should go down. Let's please not run away from reality, what we have to deal with. And I want to bless the city council people. You're all holy, you're all messengers of God to make it a better place. Continue with your mission.
And- Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. You know, I think, I think this is a good time for us to, Council, take a break right now. So we're going to take about a five-minute break. And I realize our, we're going to take a break. I'm not going to, I'm going to keep my mouth shut. All right, let's get started, everybody. Let's get started, sir. Excuse me, sir. Excuse me, sir. Excuse me. All right, everybody, please get seated. Okay. All right, so before we go to the speaker, I guess there's some confusions about which resolution- resolution that the council is going to speak on. And I heard there was just a comment right now, there was comments earlier about dealing with one resolution or the other resolution. Both resolutions is for discussion by the council, so we will be dealing with both resolutions, not just one or the two resolutions. That's what the council will be doing when it gets to that part. So we will continue with comments, and I'm going to ask the city clerk to announce the next two, please.
All right. The next speaker is Chaney Harlig, followed by Ihab Zubey.
And civil council members and the rest of the staff of the beautiful city of Montclair. Sometimes inaction is appropriate. When calls for ceasefire morphs into disrespect and hate towards our city and our country. When suggestions for resolutions mutate into pictures of our honorable mayor being circulated on social media with a red slash across his face. When calls for ceasefire turns into calls for death to America, it's time for us to take no action. Let's leave our city to deal with what is within its jurisdiction. Let's let the city do their job. Let's let them help the people in need right here in the city of Montclair. Let's unite rather than divide, so that Montclair City can continue to be a place of growth and peace for all. Our inaction on issues not local to the city of Montclair is most appropriate. Let's adopt the resolution to stay local. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Ihab Zubey, followed by Madeline.
Good evening. My name is Ihab Zubey. I want to thank the council for having these issues on the agenda tonight. I would like to start with a quote from the city of Montclair's website as to the mission of the city of Montclair. The city council serves as the Montclair Community Foundation, or MCF, Board of Directors. The vision of MCF is to work collectively and collaboratively to strengthen services and enhance the quality of life for residents by promoting health, wellness, and economic stability for all, including the most vulnerable in our community. In other words, your job is to help us stay well and stay safe. Today, I stand before you as a Palestinian-American, and I want to tell you that I don't feel safe. As our country is verging on the brink of a third world war with an irresponsible executive branch that is not hearing the voices of a clearly wide majority of the American people and whose actions thus far have only served to foment xenophobia and Islamophobia, you should know that your Arab and Muslim neighbors don't feel safe. Our government's actions on the global stage certainly have an immediate effect on the, quote, "health, wellness, economic stability, and well-being of the citizens of Montclair", and the city council has the ability to make the voices within the city to be heard on a larger scale and to advocate for our health, wellness, economic stability, and well-being. We have heard a lot of lies tonight by opposing speakers as to where the blame in this conduct lies, in this conflict lies, but what is happening in Gaza right now is clearly a genocide and has rightly been compared to the Holocaust. The Israeli government would have you believe that the situation Gaza is facing right now is because of the attacks Hamas, which is elected ruling party in Gaza carried out on October 7th. But Israel promotes this idea successfully by dehumanizing the Palestinian people to the general public, especially relying on xenophobia and Islamophobia to spin public opinion against the plight of the Palestinians. Why should you take immediate interest in the situation? One of the most horrific lessons of the Holocaust was that it was possible for people not involved to stand by and remain silent as a whole nation of people was systematically exterminated. The world repeats the slogan "Never Again," and yet it's happening again, ironically, at the hands of the ones for whom the words were first uttered. Each of us here in America, whether we realize it or not, is actually directly involved in the tragedy, and this is a genocide being funded by our United States government, your tax dollars, and it has been this way for years. The US already gives Israel more aid than any other nation on earth, and it is a country that has already has the fourth strongest military in the world. Other major cities have passed similar resolutions, and now it's Montclair's turn. By passing Resolution 243434-
Before we go on to the next speaker, just a couple of things. I want to ask the city attorney to just explain something real fast, but please don't interrupt the speaker. I will tell the speaker when they're done. I do give the ex-speakers an extra 10 seconds at the end, and automatically the volume goes off, so I'll, I'll deal with it. City Attorney Robbins, could you just can clarify the two items on the agenda and what the council, as far as discussion and comments and-
I just was getting the feeling that some of the speakers think there's two items on the agenda, one for each resolution, but it's all one, one item. So they can speak on the one item.
Yes, the council can take, can take action on either of those or do something else. May I correct the attorney after we're done with these comments?
That's correct. That's what you'll be discussing, is whether you want to adopt either one.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yes. My name is Madeline Newman-Rios. I am a Jewish-American woman living in Claremont, California. The current events in Israel-Palestine have taken the lives of some 1,200 persons living in Israel and more than 33,000 living in Gaza. The impact is felt throughout the world and in particular in our inland California community, home to many who have lost hundreds of their relatives. Failure to recognize these events such as these fly in the face of the legitimate concerns of our impacted community, and through such silence supports a repression of those who point out the asymmetrical disproportionate slaughter whose end is not yet in sight. As just one example, Dr. Roberta Perlman of the Pomona Unified School District Board, along with their superintendent, denied the traditional free use of the school district property in response to a decision by the organizers of the annual Cesar Chavez pilgrimage, which includes a strictly humanitarian call for a mutual ceasefire to, quote-unquote, "end the killing of everyone." It is vital that public entities counter such actions and listen to the youth of our communities. The pilgrimage organizers moved their event out of the school grounds in defense of the human rights of all, and we urge you to do the same and recognize that the human rights of both Israelis and Palestinians do impact Montclair. Resolution 243433 is not neutral. It is a resolution to silence reality. Thank you.
Next is Estee Chandler, followed by Lisa.
Not here?
Ceasefire resolutions are far more than symbolic exercises. They recognize that we as citizens have personal and civic stakes in events that take place around the world. I am the proud Jewish-American daughter of an Israeli father with a very large family in Israel. My grandfather fled the pogroms in Ukraine, lured by political Zionism. He went to Palestine. There's an insidious effort to conflate antisemitism with anti-Zionism, to confuse and frighten people from speaking out against the movement's decades-long oppression of Palestinians enforced by the Israeli government. The conflation may be used here tonight for the same purpose, but antisemitism is discrimination, violence, and dehumanizing stereotypes directed at Jews because they are Jewish. Zionism is an over 100-year-long project of establishing and developing a state of, by, and for Jews only in historic Palestine at the expense of indigenous Palestinians through settler colonialism, ethnic cleansing, and apartheid. Being anti-Zionist isn't new or anti-Semitic. It's opposing the political ideology that called for the expulsion of indigenous Palestinians from their land and homes in 1948 and to maim, kill, and starve them today. The Palestinian death toll in Gaza stands at over 34,000 people, more than 13,800 children and 8,400 women. Over 76,500 have been entered, over 8,000 remain missing under the rubble, and over 90% of the population has been internally displaced. According to the World Health Organization, the population of Gaza is starving to death. This is genocide. Many of us here are asking you to join a nationwide effort to save every human life possible by passing a resolution to call for an immediate and permanent ceasefire. History has her eyes on all of us. We will all be confronted with the question of what we did to stop this genocide and when we did it. Never again is now. Please pass a ceasefire resolution tonight. Thank you.
Next speaker is Lisa, followed by Janelle. Next speaker is Janelle, followed by Lisa.
First, I'd like to start off the- A ceasefire resolution is not biased against Jewish people. Lack of a ceasefire will hurt Jewish Israelis as tensions continue to rise. Bombing civilians also does nothing to stop Hamas either. They have bombed them before, like in 2013, and Hamas has existed because they are an ideology of oppressed people fighting against their oppressors. There was no peace before October 7th. Over 200 Palestinians were murdered by the IOF before October in 2023. There has been a blockade for almost two decades in Gaza, which is also an act of war. They all, blockade things such as food, other essentials, and even building materials so they can't build buildings. And how does blocking food now help the hostages that are there now, literally starving as well? So how is that their imperative? What about the Palestinian hostages? If you want to talk about hostages, adults and children held in military prisons, and some of them have no convictions and some of them have no charges, yet are held indefinitely. Israeli human right organizations, Israeli human right organizations themselves have reported that Palestinians are tortured and these prisons are not properly fed and are not provided proper healthcare. Settlers have been attacking Palestinian villages and homes for decades as well. Even right now, settlers are attacking the West Bank. In 2015, Israeli settlers burned alive an 18-month-old baby, Ali Dawabsheh, and the legal representatives of the attackers are now politicians in the Knesset. Israel negotiated a deal in 2018 to help Qataris go into Gaza to provide billions of dollars to Hamas. Israel helps fund them, so how are they trying to stop them now? Israel themselves have also perpetuated acts of antisemitism, like when they forced Ethiopian Jewish women to take birth control for over a decade, or a third of the Holocaust survivors living in poverty in Israel. And allowing sexual assaults of Jewish service women in the IOF go unchecked. None of this is pro-Jewish. Israel is a terrorist, racist, and anti-Semitic state. Ceasefire now!
Next speaker is Lisa, followed by Farzana. Farzana?
Today, I would like to read an excerpt from one of my favorite poets, who's, who aptly summarizes what a lot of people in our community is feeling at the moment, if I may. When the earth shakes and the homes crumble, or the water is poisoned, or the land thieves, or the voices silenced, or the justice violated, or the bombs fall, or the floods come, or the fires rage, or the apartheid rains, or the bodies are noosed, or the beauty is bleached, or the girls are stolen, or the boys slaughtered, or the masses murdered, or the vulnerable starved, or the families are nationed, and you do not in fact care because they are not your people, the right kind of people. We who are still a soulful kind of human pray a merciful lightning will strike your calcified heart and shock you into the glaring truth life that if we for you are not your people, then in the ultimate realm of spirit and love, you are no one. Be not this, be everything. Examine what blocks your heart from feeling and acting when certain groups are in crisis. Dissolve this blockage, and you save your own people, for their time in crisis too will come, and your open heart now will be a prayer for hearts to open then. This is the law of the sacred web of life, indigenous ways. Prayers up and actions ignited for all souls and communities in crisis. Care is not a feeling. Care is an action. Care acts. Caring is creativity with a cause. So council members, I ask you, since when has calling for a ceasefire become so controversial? It's the only civilized thing to do. I implore you to lead with your heart. Side not with the oppressors, but with the oppressed. Be not pro-genocide, but pro-life. Call for a permanent ceasefire and uplift all our humanity. Thank you.
Lisa, followed by Abraham Stein. Oh, sorry, Stern.
I just want to start off by saying that we didn't appreciate the mayor's behavior last meeting, but we do appreciate your apology towards Ms. Martinez, and I just want to say thank you to Ms. Martinez for making tonight happen. I just want to make it clear that calling for a ceasefire is a part of this city's agenda and duty, because a lot of the people here that you represent are calling for a ceasefire. And additionally, $362,000 of Montclair City taxpayer dollars are being, are being used to fund genocide. And then I also want to throw in there that Councilmember Ben Lopez, I think it's really bad that you are being accused for sexually assaulting your employees. So I just want to throw that out there. And also, the city of Montclair spends thousands of dollars paying for your lawsuits to cover up for your mistakes, and I do believe those victims, because I've also seen how Councilmember Martinez was being harassed here in front of all the witnesses, in front of the cameras, and the mayor didn't care. And none of you guys stood up, none of you guys did anything or said anything, and I think that's disgusting. But I am urging you to do the right thing today and call for a ceasefire, and also look into your investments and divest from these genocidal companies. So please, call for a ceasefire or else, like, we'll be back. Like, you don't have enough chairs for everybody in this room, so we'll come back. And call for a ceasefire. Free Palestine.
Next is Abraham Stern, followed by Nirvett.
My name is Abraham. I'm a Jewish-American with roots through Israel. Some of my ancestors escaped the Holocaust, many did not. Many Jews were murdered in the Holocaust in part because America turned them away, because people said then what is being said now, that they don't want to concern themselves with international issues and only want to stick to local matters. And I say all of us should never forget how such cowardice and indifference to human suffering costs lives. Then it was Jewish lives, my family's lives, and today, failing to act is costing Palestinian lives, and we must act. It is over 40,000 dead that Israel has murdered in six months, yet the Zionists here haven't had their fill. This isn't Judaism. It's a death cult. No amount of dead Palestinians will satisfy them. There, there was talk of human shields tonight. What a joke. Israel has, Israel has pushed 2 million people into a tiny box and bombed it relentlessly. How can anyone escape? It's a lie, human shields, and an excuse for genocide. I've been to Israel. Military installments are right next to and amongst schools and museums. Military personnel are often found in hospitals. Sounds like human shields. Does this mean that Israel's schools and hospitals are fair game? No! So stop saying it's okay for Israel to bomb Palestinian hospitals and schools. Israel lied about the details of October 7th. They, they're lying about UNRWA. I have sent you all documentation showing this. International journalists, Israeli journalists have covered this. I'm sick of Israel murdering people in the name of Judaism. You must shut it down. We know what you're trying to do with Resolution 243434- We know what you're trying to do with Resolution 243433. You're trying to neuter our ability to help Palestine. You would equate turning your back on Jews trying to flee in the Holocaust. Stop attacking our rights to free speech. Bring 243434 to the floor first and pass it. The tactics don't surprise me, given the conduct.
Next speaker is Mirvet, followed by Alex Roca.
Local ceasefire coalition, the Arab-American Caucus. I'm also 100% Palestinian, and I also, my family, my paternal maternal family is in the West Bank where there is no Hamas, and my family is subjected to pogroms and attacks every single day, every single day. So we're saying this is not a local issue. I am telling you as a Palestinian, the hate against people in my community here locally, against Muslims, Arabs, and of course, the Jewish community, it's on the rise. I can't even wear the kufiya anymore without worrying that I'm going to be attacked or my children will be attacked. In our schools, I never ever had the fear of being Palestinian, and when you address antisemitism, you need to also address what's happened, the anti-Palestinian, anti-Arab, and anti-Muslim hate. This is a local issue. You're paying 363,000 dollars towards the weapons for this genocide, this televised genocide, and ethnic cleansing. That is a fact. Gaza is destroyed, 90% of the infrastructure is gone. They have been starved since October 7th and under siege. Gaza's been under siege since 2007. Israel and Hamas are not equal. Israel has its own army, its own infrastructure. Shit, it has freaking healthcare. We don't even have free healthcare here. People can go to college for free over there. All I'm asking you as a Palestinian is for a ceasefire. Ceasefire isn't unilateral. A ceasefire is bilateral. It is both sides. We're asking for people to stop, period. Show us that Palestinian lives matter. Show us that. Show us that. Please, one day, every single one of you that voted against this is going to be judged harshly. Thank you so much, Councilmember Martinez. I don't know you, but I'll support you for any damn race you ever run for, because I am tired. I am so tired of the fake, fake politicians that don't give a damn about their cities. They just give it, all they care about is getting elected. If you want to be elected, represent the people. Represent the people. My people are dying. Save them. Stop the genocide now. Kids are watching. You want to talk about safety? I had a little old man, my dad's age today, tell me, "Shut up, you trash." That's the kind of crap that we're dealing with everywhere, in our school campuses, in our workplaces.
Right, next speaker is Alex Roca, followed by, I'm sorry, I can't read this, but the last name is Mo.
Hi, my name is Alex. First, we want Resolution 243434 to be moved up before Resolution 243433, just in case we're trying to play any games tonight. First, Israel is making a bigger issue and doing their best to drag us into this scheme. If we don't speak up now collectively, there will be something of a World War III, and it will be our problem, and we will be dragged into, we will be forced to speak up against something. I want to remind you that shortly after October 7th, Councilmember Lopez sat there and said many lies and half truths about Israel and Palestine and Hamas. You owe it to us to listen to the truth and admit the truth by passing a ceasefire resolution. Mayor, it's important that you apologize to Martinez, and I appreciate that. However, I believe this is a pattern with you. We demand accountability, and we will be watching your behavior at future city council meetings closely, and we demand respect from Martinez. The ceasefire resolution prioritizes condemning hate crimes and antisemitism, so I don't know what everyone here is so pressed about. We are fueled by compassion, and I pray that you come to realize this. Also, do you know how we can better focus on local issues, fight to keep our money here and not send it all abroad? You know Israeli citizens have free healthcare, which is awesome, but don't we deserve it here too? Being in the U.S. with such a diverse population, it is your responsibility as an elected official to protect their well-being. And how can we say we're fostering their well-being if we are actively paying for and being complacent in the slaughtering of their families abroad? We are not here because we want to be. I'd rather be home with my one and a half-year-old, but I've been taking part in pro-Palestine action multiple days a week, many weeknights. So yes, it is a local issue, and it affects all of us. The collective trauma we've endured by witnessing a genocide happening live on our phones and seeing images and videos of very unnatural injuries and deaths. Also, for those who are here to say that the city should stick to local issues, what do you get out of this? All I see are people who are comfortable in the privilege of being in a country that is not being bombed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it Mary Sue?
Good evening, City Council, Mayor, and staff. My name is Maggie, and I'm here, not only should we commend the young people that are here, we must respect their decision and for wanting and demanding a ceasefire and for having the opportunity of having free speech. I met many of these young people when I was fighting for 113 trees that were going to be massacred in the city of Fodder. These young people inspired me to think about innocent people who are dying. In my opinion, when we are complacent and we're not doing anything about it or being inactive, like one lady said here, is a tragedy, just like what happened in the Holocaust. If we don't say anything, we are just as guilty as everybody else. Please join other cities who have joined for a ceasefire. This is genocide. Please pass a ceasefire resolution tonight, not only for City Council and Ms. Martinez, Councilwoman Ms. Martinez. I hope to be a city councilwoman just like you, somebody who will stick up and do the right thing for the community. Thank you very much. Keep up the good work. So call for a ceasefire, join other cities, do the right thing. We cannot stay quiet and be complacent. We must do the right thing. Every single one of you has a responsibility to your community. Thank you.
The next speaker is Yusuf Abdel-Moehn, and then Kenneth T.
Hello, City Council. I want to start off actually by just talking about my night, July 6, 2022. My dad used to have a car dealership down the street here on Holt Boulevard in the city of Montclair. And then at night, actually, one of our printers blew up and the whole office was on fire. And he asked me to call 911, and the Montclair Fire Department responded very, very fast in less than 10 minutes, and they saved mostly everything. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank them. I saw a fireman out there. I don't know if he's still here, but God bless you guys. Oh, right here. So thank you, guys. So now, moving over to my speech, I find it kind of funny how some of the parties that came up here today to support the Resolution 243433, which says that the city of Montclair shouldn't get involved with international matters, only used international matters to defend that opinion. Kind of hypocritical. How can someone find it in them to take time out of their day to make sure that the city of Montclair doesn't pass a ceasefire resolution? By ceasefire, we mean that both sides stop dying. If the party that stood up here today really believed in what they were saying, they would have proposed the resolution where they asked the city to pass a resolution to support Israel and not simply just shift their focus from international matters. On why you should support Israel to continue the genocide, and why you should support Israel to kill more children, since 15,000 dying wasn't already enough. On why you should support Israel to kill more innocent men and women, since 40,000 people dying wasn't enough for them. But that's not what they did, and they ended up to try to manipulate you guys to shift your focus from that and just simply ignore it, which is, I hope, what you guys won't do tonight. This isn't a religious matter, nor is it an international matter. This is a humanitarian cause, and I stand here by you today praying that the city council finds it in them to call for a ceasefire so that innocent men, women, and children can stop dying. Some of the parties that also spoke today will try to manipulate the city into thinking that all Jews are in support of what the terror state of Israel is doing. That is completely false. We had Jewish speakers come up here today and support ceasefire. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
All right, next speaker is Kenneth T., followed by Kyo Nguyen.
Hello, councilmembers. What we're seeing in Gaza today is not a war between Israel and Hamas. It is an outright genocide of Palestinians. It did not start on October 7th. It goes back all the way to 1948, when Israel was founded through an act of expelling 750,000 Palestinians. In 1948, Zionist terror gangs such as the Lehhi, Irghun, and Ha'gana committed massacres in Palestinian villages such as Deir Yasin and slaughtered thousands of men, women, and children. These Zionist terror gangs combined to form what is now known as the IDF, and they are still doing the same thing. This is how Israel was founded, as an apartheid state that steals Palestinians' homes and land to build Jewish-only settlements. The Israeli government holds thousands of Palestinian men, women, and children as hostages in Israeli prisons indefinitely without charge or trial. It is called administrative detention, and it has been going on long before October 7th. Israeli politicians are not shy about hiding what they're doing. Benjamin Netanyahu has referred to Palestinians as Amalek, a biblical nation which God had ordered the Israelites to completely exterminate, men, women, and children. Israeli Minister of National Security, Itamar Ben-Gvir, had a photo in his office of Baruch Goldstein, a terrorist Israeli settler who walked into the Ibrahimin Mosque in Hebron with a rifle and shot and killed 29 Palestinians, injuring 125 in 1994. Israeli Defense Minister Yoav Galant has referred to Palestinians in Gaza as "human animals." In the past six to seven months, we have seen 40,000 deaths, including 15,000 children. That's more children killed in one small area than in all global conflicts over the past four years. Nothing about this is self-defense. Those who oppose a ceasefire are directly advocating and inciting a genocide. And let's take a moment to remember some of these children of Gaza. Remember Mohammed Durr, who was killed at 12 years old as he was hiding behind his father in the year 2000. 24 years later, we're still watching Palestinian children being killed on video. Please grow a spine and take action to stop this genocide. Thank you very much.
Right, next is Kyo Nguyen, followed by Ziad.
Hello, City Councilmembers. I'm going to start by reciting a Palestinian poem by Marwan Makou. "In order for me to write poetry that isn't political, I must listen to the birds. And in order to listen to the birds, the warplanes must be silent." To be, to take a stance that's apolitical is violence. To say that we do not, that community matters are not, that we are not in a vacuum, is violence, okay? Everything is political, from the air we breathe to the land that we stand on. We are on indigenous land. This plastic is from oil that militaries have fought wars over, okay? The mall, we have fast fashion. Everything is political, and for us to not deal with political issues, to say that things are apolitical is violence, is ignorance. To not look around and see things as they are, that is an issue. I, as a Vietnamese immigrant, I, as a Montclair resident of 28 years, am here to stand with the Palestinian people, to say that we demand a ceasefire, okay? As an immigrant, as someone that understands liberation, I do not know the names of my ancestors. I know the blood that they have shed to fight for their country because they knew what liberation was. Ceasefire now for today and yesterday. It should have been passed yesterday. Thank you.
The next speaker is Ziad, followed by Frank Sanchez.
Good evening, Malia Ziad. First, I would like to clarify some of the lies tonight. The killing of the 250 Marines in Beirut was not perpetrated by Hamas in 1982. Hamas was not exist in 1982. It was coordinated with the Mossad, who failed to inform the CIA about the incident. Second, we were attacked first by Israel, when Israel attacked the U.S. Liberty in 1967, killing tens of our Marines. Now Israel dragging us in the Third World War by attacking the embassy of Iran. And when Iran tried to retaliate, we were dragged to defend Israel, and that is going to make it our business, because our kids, our children, our people, they're going to come to defend Israel. Now, I would like to dare you, I dare you tonight, you go home and look at your children and grandchildren in the eye and tell them, "I voted no in a ceasefire resolution to allow the killing of innocent children continue." I will dare you tonight to go to your spouse and look at her in the eye or his in the eye and let him know that I voted no in ceasefire resolution to allow the rape of pregnant women in front of their husband to continue. I dare you to continue, I dare you tonight to go home and to look at your parents and grandparents in the eye and let them know that you voted no in ceasefire resolution to allow the starvation of 2 million innocent people to continue. I know you have a lot of humanity in you. I would really appreciate if you can vote yes in ceasefire now. Thank you. Free Palestine.
Okay, sorry, Frank Sanchez is not speaking. He already spoke. Safi Khan, followed by Chapo.
Andrea, how many more speakers we have?
About 20.
Twenty, okay.
Good. All right. Good evening. I'm an introvert. I don't like to speak out, right? But this is a humanitarian. The rabbi mentioned about Montclair High School. I went to Montevista Elementary School. I went to Serrano Middle School. I went to Montclair High School. I was the captain of the 2011 basketball team that took the team all the way to the quarterfinals of the CIF. What Montclair taught me is to be brave, speak out for injustice, and I'm a byproduct of Montclair High School. What I want to just share is just the atrocities that's been happening. It's one-sided. This issue is our issue, right? We are giving Israel aid that we can use on ourselves. We're talking about homelessness. The gentleman in the beginning talked about homelessness and all of that, right? Fixing roads. I was here in Montclair when we used to have Pahls, right? My dad had a blue caravan that, just with Pahls and Pahls, his car used to get wrecked. We can use that money here. Why are we saying that, oh, it's okay for us to give the money to Israel when we need that money here? Again, I didn't come with a speech prepared or anything. I have 49 seconds left, but I'm a representative of what Montclair High School has made. I'm really proud that I was able to come to Montclair as an immigrant and be given the opportunities that a lot of people may not have. And I want to stand here so that my son can know that his father asked for ceasefire, so he can look into me in my eyes and I can say that I did my best. I came up. I'm not a good speaker, right? I'm shaking, mumbling, and everything like that, right? But at least I can go home and I can tell him that your dad did the best he could. And at the end of the day, it's up to your decision, and I implore you to use logic, to see the stats that I've been giving, but it's really horrendous to see that we are relying on stats to say 15,000 kids, like that should never be the case, ever, in any case. So please do pass the ceasefire, it's going to help both sides. Both hostages might be...
Next speaker is Chapo, followed by Zuhair.
Being a resident of Montclair, I would like to request that Resolution 243434 be moved up ahead of Resolution 243433, to ensure that voice of the majority here is heard. I'm in support of a ceasefire resolution. I do not permit my U.S. tax dollars to fund genocide, nor will I tolerate this county and their support in the killing of indigenous peoples of Palestine. Your hypocrisy is blatant. How can we turn a blind eye to the truth and what we've all contributed to? We can see what the system has sowed across seas and here. The starvation of innocent civilians, the slaughter of human beings. The power is in our hands by our contributions to what we sow. This is not a conflict nor a war. This is genocide. 33,000 Palestinians have been murdered by the weapons and bombs that this country has funded. The genocide of indigenous peoples of Palestine. We've seen this time and time again in history, and yet history repeats itself by the lack of empathy and compassion. While we all go back to our comfortable, privileged lives without a worry of bombs flying down from the sky, I hope you don't forget the children of Palestine. Where is your humanity? Where is your humanity? Vive la Palestine. May the torch of truth and love cast out this ignorance that pervades the hearts that stand before me, with the privilege and comfort that you all have and that we do, what we all do have. Thank you.
The next speaker is Zuhair, followed by Soraya.
A local government’s legal obligation is to represent the people that elected it. The council is not who decides what is city business. It is the citizens who have the right to declare that and have our representatives act accordingly on it. Passing Resolution 243433 assumes that each council member has the qualifications of the city attorney to make decisions, which is already not and will never be the case. A diverse group of individuals with different skillsets are chosen for a reason, to be able to navigate the complex needs of the citizens. Should this resolution pass, the humanity and individualism of a city council member is stripped and their duties can be replaced by artificial intelligence, who can informatically determine better whether or not a subject matter checks all the legal boxes. Lastly, 243433 does not include any checks and balances that will prevent its abuse. Regarding 243434, it’s important for us to all understand that nowhere in the resolution is stated the picking of sides. And it’s already established, based on neighboring cities, that a ceasefire resolution is within the capabilities of a city to pass so that the city can use its ability to put pressure on the federal government to make decisions that will best benefit all citizens of the nation. Israel’s most recent defense against Iran’s retaliation to Israel’s illegal bombing of the Iranian embassy cost Israel $1 billion and the USA its own $600 million just this weekend. Over 500,000 Israelis have left the war-torn state back to their native countries out of fear. The Israeli economy is down 20%, and Benjamin Netanyahu is now dragging the already declining country into an international conflict that puts the lives of not only all Israelis, but everyone in the world at stake for its own extremist political agenda. Just a few miles south, in just six months, over half, almost half of 100,000 Palestinians have been murdered. 2 million have been displaced and are being starved by the same terror state that hunted and bombed seven World Central Kitchen members, one of which who is an American. A ceasefire resolution is in the benefit of Palestinians, Israelis, and Americans. A ceasefire resolution reflects the historical significance of what Palestine is, a monumental region of acceptance and love for religious and cultural diversity. By advocating for peace, we uphold...
All right, the next speaker is Soraya, followed by Nazli Janju.
Members, my name is Soraya, and I’m a mother for three kids. The older one in Ayala High School, the middle one is nine years old, and the youngest is just turned five in May. I would like to request that Resolution 243434 be moved up ahead of Resolution 243433. A city business, not only for parks or stores or economies issues. The most important issue is the resident’s safety. As a mother, how I feel safe if my kids want to wear Palestinian kufiyah and get shot? Like the three young Palestinian men, Hisham, Kenan, and Tashin, who have been shot near a university campus environment in USA? Or stabbing, murder, like a six-year-old boy, Palestinian-American, Wadi Al Fayumi, with his landlord in Chicago, and the landlord yelled, “You Muslims must die!” Employers, universities, and schools were among the primary actors suppressing free speech by those who sought to vocally oppose Israeli genocidal onslaught in Gaza and call attention to Palestinian human rights. Students get bullied or threatened, like what happened in Georgia. Teacher, a leisure lady threatened to beat and behead a seventh-grade Muslim student after the student asked about the teacher’s Israeli flag. Recently, on April 10, five people, including four juveniles, are now charged in connection to a shooting at an Eid al-Fitr event in West Philadelphia, that left three people injured and hundreds running for their lives. Please make us feel safe, stand against genocide, and support the ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
Hey, Nazli? I hope I said that right.
Good evening. I did want to just acknowledge the mayor who stepped out for apologizing to Ms. Martinez. It’s not easy to publicly say that, so point taken. I did have to actually revise everything I was going to say based on his apology. But I will pick up on some of the threads from the prior city council meeting regarding 24 dot dot 3. So one of the things that was mentioned was that the mayor has his point of view and Ms. Martinez has her point of view, and that’s entirely missing the point. Actually, your point of view doesn’t matter if you’re sitting on that side. It’s everybody on this side. It’s our point of view that matters. And like the aspiring congressman said, the purpose of this is to amplify us as a community. That’s how society works. We are one person, and collectively, we’re a city and we’re a community. And you pass our consensus opinion and take that all the way up to the tone-deaf federal government. So that’s what we’re here for. Regarding the specific examples about what really is the purpose of a city council, some of the examples were things like potholes, repairing potholes. To be honest, these are things that can really, in the future, be automated. And if you adopt this Resolution 243433 and say that really you’re only here to take care of those types of things, you will actually make yourselves obsolete, to be replaced by AI to take care of those things. I would argue that actually, we need a city council exactly for these types of things that require human intelligence to say when we are heading down towards World War III, like the email writer also said. Now, some people have said, “Why this issue?” It is because the crimes of Israel are the most heinous. We have never seen such examples of this. They are setting new lows in humanity. And that is why the ICJ is calling it out, why the UN Rapporteur for Human Rights is calling it out. And if they were not so heinous, they would be letting free press into that country, which they are not. In fact, they are shooting free press, as they are shooting doctors. And I myself am a doctor, and I recognize this. So I do think that you should cancel the first resolution. I will call it Point A, and you should adopt the ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
All right, our next speaker is Anonymous 1, followed by Anonymous 2.
Anonymous 1 and Anonymous 2? Okay.
Hello there. I just want to clarify something. I’m Palestinian. I never in my life hated Jewish because they’re Jewish. I have nothing against anybody who’s Jewish. I own the business and hold. I dealt with Jewish people all my life during the business that I’m in. So whoever says that we are against Jewish, or we hate Jewish, or anti-Semitic, that’s a lie. We deal with Jewish just because they would deal with us. We have nothing to do against Jewish. That’s one thing. I own a land in the West Bank that my family cannot reach now because settlers got in it and they shoot anybody comes close. We’re not here to talk about that. We’re here to talk about the situation upon us. We are Montclair. We care about Montclair. But at least, we can say what’s right. We’re not asking the city to donate. We’re not asking the city to divert their attention from the schooling, from these things, and for issues that we’re not dealing with every day. All what we’re asking is to say the right thing. Other cities did. Passed a resolution that this killing of Israelis and Palestinians get a stop. This is not helping the Israelis, nor is it helping the Palestinians for this situation to stay the way it is. Israelis are dying every day, just like Palestinians are dying every day. The situation going on because Mr. Netanyahu is to his own advantage to keep this going. Us Americans have higher power to say, “Stop this. We should do what’s right, which is stop the killing wherever it is.” In Russia, when Russia attacked Ukraine, we all jumped and said, “This is not right.” Why would we treat this situation different? Why would we allow this? Because October 7? The situation didn’t happen in October 7. The situation’s been going on for years. But we’re not here to discuss that. But at least we could say what’s right. Killing is not right, by all means. Thank you, guys.
All right, is Anonymous 2 here?
Say Anonymous 2?
Yes.
Someone say Jawa Markalani. Is that what you said? Great, okay, good. First, let me say this first thing. I would say commend Councilmember Martinez for having the courage to sponsor this and also to you, mayor, for recognizing what you did was wrong, but to apologize as well, too. What I will do right now, I will not regale you on so much of what you heard already. Some truths, some not truths. But this is what I want to say to you now. One, I stand before you as a descendant of the people that gave the world the three major religions, which is all the reason why we should have CRT in the schools. Judaism is an African-based religion. Islam, peace be unto Muhammad, please. Christianity, those are the three monotheistic religions that came out of Africa. So the first practitioners of Judaism are people that look like me. To conflate Zionism and Judaism is historically inaccurate. And to the Europeans that practice the religion of my people, they are inconsistent because all three of those religions speak to the decency and moral standards of how humans must govern themselves. Emmanuel Kant himself, who developed human rights and the philosopher of human rights, he himself was a racist. But yet still, we understand the decency to have human rights. That was the basis of United Nations, to have a base where humans can engage one another and they have dialogue. Now, for those who say, “Don’t get involved in international issues,” I’ll say to you, slavery itself was both international and domestic. Lincoln-Douglas debate took places in locales like Montclair, Claremont, to have the discussion around slavery and understand that Emmanuel Kant himself was a racist, and he didn’t view people like myself. And counsel is assuming women ju... Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Nicole, followed by Philip Gomez.
I think it’s an amazing testament to the city, the community of Montclair, to have so many people here tonight that actually care about what’s happening. I know for you all, you know, the issue is, like, is this an issue that we should take up as a community? But it is, right? It’s an issue we have all seen, and I’m sure you have too. We’ve seen terrible, terrible things, things that we would never want to see in our life. I mean, they’re horrible. We have nightmares about these things. And so, we definitely should take this up as an issue, right? And, you know, some of these mistruths that we’ve heard tonight are really manipulative, right? Saying that innocent people are dying, they’re not dying. They’re being murdered, and they’re being murdered with our tax money, right? So I hope that, I mean, I wish that we didn’t have to be here tonight either, right? It’s a burden on all of us that our national leadership is failing all of us, right? And putting us in these strange times where we’re showing up to city council meetings and asking you to please, please, support humanity, right? This issue of whether the city of Montclair should take it up, and I’ve heard, you know, some arguments that it might cause division and tension. And I just want to say that, I want to ask you to look at other cities. You know, about 80 cities in the United States have already passed ceasefire resolutions. So I would just ask you to pay attention to what’s happening in those cities. Claremont, our neighbor, right, did this, and guess what’s happening? People aren’t going to stop talking about genocide. They’re going to keep going. We’re going to keep showing up. And if you don’t let us come here, we’re going to show up in other spaces because this is the genocide, and we’re going to speak out against it. Claremont just arrested 20 college students, 20 college students on their campus. They’re arrested because they’re speaking out about genocide, right? Chino Hills, the tensions are rising there, let me tell you, okay? I was just at La Puente City Council meeting last week. Beautiful, amazing. I mean, people are feeling heard by their city councils. So I would just implore you to please, 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 be a city that stands with humanity, that stands against oppression, that stands against genocide. Thank you.
Next is Philip Gomez, followed by Salma Metta.
I’m here to speak in support of Resolution 243434 and opposed to 243433. And the reason why I am, what do you call, that I am supportive of this because I am supportive of a ceasefire resolution. What do you call, there are many people who assume, right there, what do you call, incorrectly so, that this is not a local issue. But all of our tax money, not only is all of our tax money paying for this, but what happens internationally does affect what happens locally, whether it is in racist attacks, whether it’s antisemitism, or anti-Arabism, or anti-Palestinian sentiment, all of that, Islamophobia, all of that is affected by what is happening internationally and how our national leaders respond to those issues. I’d also like to mention, right there, that in 1985, a Palestinian-American civil rights activist and organizer by the name of Alex Odeh in the city of Santa Ana was supposed to give, what do you call, sometime in October, he was supposed to give a speech at a Jewish synagogue in Fountain Valley to bridge the gap between the Jewish community and the Palestinian community. He did not give that speech because he was assassinated earlier that morning by a pipe bomb explosion when he opened up the door of his office. The men who have done this, right there, are currently on the run right now, are wanted by the FBI. The FBI currently has a $1 million reward out for information leading to their arrest. They are hiding out in Israel, and what do you call, one of them by the name of Andy Green, who goes by the name of Baruch Ben Yosef, lives in an illegal settlement and is organizing the protest to block food aid into Gaza right now. This is a wanted man in the United States. He needs to be extradited and brought here to face justice. So this is just as much a local issue as it is a national and international one. Ceasefire now. Free Palestine.
Salma Metta, followed by Julian Gonzalez.
Hello, my name is Salma. I am 11 years old, and I’m in the sixth grade. I can’t tell you how terrible I feel knowing that our country is paying for these war crimes that are happening in Palestine as I speak. And as a kid, I feel so helpless knowing that I can’t stop the killing of my people. More than 15,000 children have been killed in Israel with U.S. tax dollars since October 7. There are over 25,000 children orphans and thousands of kids in prisons. I hate, also, the hate towards Palestinians, Arabs, and Muslims scares me because I clearly saw how much it has grown even in this room today. I don’t feel safe anymore. Please stop the genocide, help my people, and vote for a ceasefire resolution. It is the duty of everyone here in this world to stop the injustices. I am only 12, but I can hear, and I can remember, and I can see, and I’ll remember this forever. I’m praying you vote for a ceasefire. Thank you. Free Palestine.
Gonzalez, followed by Nora T.
Good afternoon once again, city council members. I’m sure you know my stance, but I will say it again. We are here to request for a ceasefire resolution to be passed and to more specifically request that Resolution 243434 be moved up be moved up ahead of Resolution 243433, to ensure the majority will be heard. You tell us we don’t have enough people. I brought more. You tell us we still don’t have enough people. We brought even more. This issue doesn’t go away, no matter how much you oppress us and try to scare us. We come here to be heard with more people by your demand, and you give us cops surveying us on top of the roof. You see someone giving us the chance to speak, and you disrespect and mistreat her in the most unprofessional manner. We are tired of your oppression, and we demand to be heard. To add, I am deeply disimported in council members Tanis Johnson and Bill Ruh. I reached out to you in an attempt to be heard and seek help, but you chose to ignore me. As my email read, “We really need your help because we feel like our voices are not being heard.” heard and it is discouraging to us as youth and as soon-to-be adults." You seem really active in our community and how you, involved you are with my school, so we thought you would help us be heard. I am especially disappointed with Councilwoman Johnson, you have always prided yourself for your connection to the youth and the work you've done for my school. But what is happening in front of us will be an example to us forever on the power of democracy against what we feel like is a power that is trying to silence us. And like I was saying last time, this is, this is a necess- this is a necessity we are demanding, it is not only local, it is everywhere. This is a drawing that was given to me yesterday at a protest, so, from a five-year-old girl at the protest site, so I could hold it up for her. Tell me this, if a five-year-old can understand that murder is wrong, why can't you? Why does it take a bunch of teenagers and students to step up and act more mature than you in your own meeting? Look at our faces and let me know if you think we can look up to you. Are you going to be the person that ignores and neglects the kids of your community?
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Nora T., followed by Edna Sobri.
3433 is a death sentence to our autonomy and freedom of choice as the city of Montclair. The simple truth is, our activities as a city are always involved in international politics and international economic affairs. The local rabbi is for the Resolution 3433 because we must stay local, but he goes to pretty much every city hall in the inland empire to influence city councils everywhere in the area to be against a ceasefire. So, how local is this guy? I don't know where he's from, okay? All right, so, these people, these people want us to keep sending our money to international corporations like Starbucks, which helps support genocide, and they want to make the city council unable to do anything about it. I understand that the larger national foreign policy strategy is to fund the state of Israel. However, several municipalities across the nation recognize that divesting from the state of Israel does not pose a national security risk, a violation of the First Amendment, nor a necessary contradiction of federal policy. I would like to spend my following time explaining why, as a Christian, there is no moral or righteous reason to be supporting the state of Israel, especially financially. The state of Israel is an ethno-state that practices apartheid. The truth is, Christians in America, little as 200 years ago, would laugh in the face of anybody who insists on doing business with a government who made the entire Holy Land an ethno-state that's secular. It's laughable, honestly. And these past few hundred years have taken a lot of work from Zionists to make American Christians be on their side. Works such as newly created editions of the Bible, like the Scofield Bible, for example, which includes doctored exegesis and eschatology that has no real basis in history, in history or theology. In other words, it is not your biblical duty to support the state of Israel. There is nothing legitimate in the Bible that says you as a Christian should be supporting a Jewish ethno-state in the Holy Land that exiles and destroys-
Thank you.
Okay, next is Edna Sobri, followed by Ibrahim Shahid.
I'm, I'm sure that all the council members are educated people and can see what are true and what are lies and fake news. We don't expect you to solve the Israeli-Palestinian conflict that's going on for years, and we are just expect you to take care of Montclair local issues. Israel didn't start this war and want to end it too, but they cannot do it until Hamas release all the innocent people they kidnapped on October 7th and hold them underground, raping and tortured them for more than six months now. But again, international issues is not your issues, and I think you need to stay local. Thank you.
Ibrahim Shahid, followed by M.D. Shahid.
Hello, council members, I'm going to keep it short. I grew up in this area and I needed leaders to show me how to lead, because in my school at least, I'm the president of our student council, and I learn, and I'm trying to learn how to lead our school, how to lead our school into a peaceful area, and how to keep peace between all the students. And what kind of people would you be if you can't keep peace between the people here and people in other countries? This may not be just an issue here, it may be an issue there, however, the issue there is affecting the people here, and that's why it's also an issue here. What kind of people would you be if you can't even teach simple things? You're our council members, and council members are supposed to be role models. What kind of role models would you be if you can't even model how to keep peace within your own cities? I thank you for your time and I hope you vote for a ceasefire. Thank you.
Next is M.D. Shahid, followed by Shoshana.
Good evening, dear mayor and council members, my name is M.D. Shahid, I am a branch chief in California Department of Transportation, so I'm a public servant. But tonight, I'm here representing the greater Muslim community in this area, I'm one of the Islamic community leaders. We service Levarne, Claremont, Pomona, Montclair, and all those neighboring cities, so I'm speaking on behalf of many hundreds of your constituents who couldn't be here tonight. I want to mention something maybe slightly different. Hopefully, you all have become aware by now that our country has become the biggest colonization project of this Zionism that we have all been exposed to recently, a lot more, has been going on for a long time. We see that with our congressmen and our senators, and we all know how much money they are taking, and they have sold their soul. So, very simply said, I hope you have not sold your souls to that Zionism project. I expect you to stand up for USA, America, not for Zionism. America stands for humanity, justice, and peace for everybody. This is a bilateral ceasefire call, make no mistake, and that's what's going to help your community come together. So, those people who are coming here and saying that this is going to divide people, well, look at all those other cities, did it divide people, those cities that have passed, like major cities like Pasadena? No, actually, it brought a lot of people together. So, it brings peace and tranquility in your city, and so hopefully, you will come to that realization, and like I said, don't sell your soul to Zionism projects, stand up for America and pass the ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
Next is Shoshana, followed by, followed by Jacob Hayavi.
Hi, thank you, city council. I want to urge you to keep these issues local, as the mayor has asserted before in the previous meetings. According to the White House website, municipalities generally take responsibilities for parks and recreational services, police, fire departments, housing services, emergency medical services, municipal courts, transportation, and public works. Why is that for everybody in the room? If you don't know, and I'm sure you guys do know, because United States is using federalism. It's a system of government in which the same territory is controlled by two levels of government. One is a national government responsible for borders and international matters, and another one is smaller subdivision of states and cities which deals with local matters. So, no matter what the feelings are in the room, the city council has no way of swaying on international matters, and all of the feelings in the room can be addressed probably in some public forum or in a presidential election, but not here. If you pass a Resolution 243434, you will set the precedent of city of Montclair voting to show a vote of confidence for current international handling by President Biden of our affairs, which would be really far-reaching, maybe advise some other countries whether they're voted for president well, or something like that. It has no bearing, no matter what we feel right here and right now. Please stay local, I appreciate your service and what you do for the city of Montclair.
Next is Jacob Hayavi, followed by Sigalif Raviv.
Thank you, honorable mayor and council members. My name is Jacob, and I support the first resolution to keep the council concentrated on local governance. I oppose the second resolution for an immediate ceasefire, as it is irrelevant to this body and beyond the jurisdiction of the city council. This resolution on its face may seem harmless, but it is part of a wider plan to designate Israel as a genocidal and an apartheid state and implement policies promoting boycott, divestment, and sanctions, as you heard. These types of policies create nothing but division within your city. They hurt local businesses and the people that they support within your community. On October 7th, Hamas and Gazan citizens killed over 1,200 kids, women, raped the women, killed men, elderly, kidnapped 240 people in a matter of hours. Israel has been fighting a war to return its kidnapped citizens and defeat Hamas. It has been six months of war with multiple attempts of ceasefire that have failed, and they have been rejected mostly by Hamas. The 30,000 casualties include 12,000 Hamas fighters. I mourn every innocent life, whether it's a Palestinian or an Israeli. I'm a doctor, I save lives. No one likes wars. We don't like wars. Israel has agreed to a ceasefire proposal by the US, by Egypt, by Qatar, but Hamas has rejected it. They refuse to even acknowledge who is alive or dead. Most of the hostages are dead, they say. Ceasefire involves an agreement by two people. You said it. That's right, there has to be two bodies agreeing for a ceasefire. You cannot impose a ceasefire on them. It's their job to reach that conclusion that it's enough. I really commend the young people for caring for their fellow human beings here, but I only heard one voice that talked about the Israelis and the Palestinians. The rest of them ignored the Israeli side. The resolution should be directed at Hamas.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you.
All right, and then this is the last one, Sigalif Raviv.
Hello.
Hello.
I was born and raised in Israel. All my life, I fought for peace. On October 7th, two of my family members were slaughtered in the Peace Nova Festival. Sorry, I'm-
Give your time, give you a little pause.
I said to you, none of us want a death of innocent people. All of us want the end of this war. This war that Hamas started on October 7th, this war could end if Hamas will release all the hostages that are being tortured, that are being tortured, raped, and dying in tunnel, in Hamas tunnels. I sat here and heard lots of lies, so let's talk truth. The truth is, no matter what you choose, well, I should have started that I support the resolution for staying local. The truth is that whatever you vote for won't change this war, it won't bring ceasefire. The only thing that will bring ceasefire is the release of all hostages. In the last few years, there were many wars, especially in the Middle East. In Syria, 500,000 civilians were died, died. Did they ask for ceasefire? 5.5 million Syrians went to, became refugees, did they ask for ceasefire? Only in Yemen, more than 350,000 civilians died in the war. Only in the recent few years, did they ask for ceasefire? 85,000 Yemen children died from starvation in the last few years, did they ask for ceasefire? So, why, no. So, why now? Why now? Why only in-
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, thank you, ma'am. Do we have any more speakers, Andrea?
That was the last card.
Any more to speak, okay, I can't hear folks, I'm trying to talk to my city clerk. Do we have any more speakers, Andrea?
No more cards.
Okay, we're going to, we're going to take a five-minute break, the city council will. Okay, let's get started all over again, or continue on the meeting, not all over, but... So, if everybody can please be seated, or if you wish to have your conversations, feel free to go out in the lobby. Okay, so, city clerk, can you clarify some public comment cards you have, please?
Yes, so I have one that was submitted at the beginning of the meeting, one that someone was holding on to the whole meeting, and then two that were submitted late.
Okay.
And so, there are four cards now.
Okay, that's it, all right. Then we'll continue all those four, so, why don't you present the last four, please?
Okay, so, the first one is Sausan.
My name is Sausan, and first, I would like to request that the Resolution 243434 be moved up ahead of the Resolution 243433 to ensure the voice of majority here is heard. I urge the city council to approve the ceasefire resolution. The Israeli military has murdered more than 35,000 Palestinians since October 7th, 2003. Most of them are children, women, and elderly people. Nearly half of Gaza is under the age of 16, and 65% under the age of 25, effectively meaning that Palestinian children are bearing the burnt of the Israeli government collective punishment. They bombed hospitals, mosques, and churches. It is not just that, the Israeli government has stopped all food, fuel, water, electricity, and humanitarian assistance for entering Gaza, which has already had devastating impact on over 2 million people, half of whom are children. The UN Agency of Palestinian, Palestinian Refugees just announced that Gaza is running dry, and hospital in Gaza repeat, reported that their back, backup generator ran out fuel, cutting off life supports and vital systems, leaving thousands of lives dead. This action has associated, escalated the existing humanitarian crisis caused by the Israeli government, governments air, land, and sea blockade, and will likely result in catastrophic loss of life if continued. People of Gaza are eating now animal food, dried leaves, and drought in food, because they have no food to eat. If you are heartbroken, you are not alone. We hold space in our hearts to mourn these deaths while you are using your power to do everything you can to stop all further loss of innocent lives. It's unacceptable and human and just collective punishment and the violation of international law. It must end.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Well, we have three more cards, so there's another speak, another card coming up.
Okay, Lee Nora Gelt.
Good evening, mayor and honorable city council members, my name is Lee Mo. My father's family was ethnically cleansed from their homeland in Libya just because they were Jewish. My husband's family experienced genocide by the Nazis in Poland and our Holocaust survivors from Auschwitz. We've experienced antisemitism firsthand then, and now our children are experiencing it here in the high schools in the inland empire. Swastikas are drawn under- Swastikas are drawn on their desks, Nazi salutes are shown in their presence, and anti-Semitic texts are sent to them. I want to make something clear. Israel does not exist because the Holocaust occurred. Rather, the Holocaust would not have occurred had Israel existed. I'm here to ask the honorable council members not to consider voting for a ceasefire resolution and keep Montclair local. Intervening in another sovereign country's affairs will only tear our community even more. They call for a ceasefire, but Hamas keeps rejecting them. No one mentioned the continued rockets launched into Israel daily from Gaza. No one mentioned the 133 hostages that are being raped and tortured daily. What if it was your daughter, your babies, and your sons in the barbaric hands of Hamas? What would you do? If Hamas puts their arms down, there will be peace. If Israel puts their arms down, there will be no Israel and Hamas and the war, and bring the hostages home. Thank you for your time.
All right, the next speaker is Abu Elias, followed by Abdul Rahman Kotat.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for giving me the chance to speak tonight. The murdering of Palestinians didn't start on October 7. As a matter of fact, it started way before that. April 1948, Deir Yasin massacre. 107 Palestinians were murdered by the Israeli occupation. May 1948, Abu Shusha massacre. 20 Palestinians were murdered by the occupation in Palestine. May 1948, Tantura massacre. 200 Palestinians were murdered by the Israeli occupation. July 1948, Al-Lut Ar-Ramla massacre. 400 Palestinians were murdered by the Israeli occupation. October 1948, Salihah massacre. 94 Palestinians were murdered by the Israeli occupation. October 1948, Adewaima massacre. 455 Palestinians were murdered by the Israeli occupation. October 1953, Qibi massacre. 69 Palestinians were murdered by the Israeli occupation. October 1956, Kfar Qasim massacre. 49 Palestinians were murdered by the Israeli occupation. November 1956, Khan Yunis massacre. 400 Palestinians were murdered by the Israeli occupation. September 1982, Sabra and Shetel massacre. 3,000 Palestinians were murdered by the Israeli occupation. October 1990, Al-Aqsa massacre. 150 Palestinians were murdered by the Israeli occupation. February 1994, the Ibrahimiy Mosque massacre. 29 people were massacred while they are praying in the mosque. April 2002, Genian Refugee massacre. 54 Palestinians were murdered by Israeli massacres. List of massacres in Gaza. Number 1, 2009, 1,479 Palestinians were murdered by the Israeli occupation. 2012, 1,220 Palestinians were murdered by Israeli occupation. 2019, 223 people were murdered by Israeli occupation. 2020...
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Abdul Rahman Kotat.
Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone is having a good time today. I'm here. I'm from Cairo, Egypt. I've been studying in America for the past five years, and I'm here to address, we need a ceasefire. We need to bring an end to all of that, the genocide that's happening. I don't think anybody's happy with that. No Egyptian, no Arab, no Muslim, no Christian, no Jewish. And talking about hostages, Hamas taking hostages, the hostages that were taken themselves, they said that Hamas people treated them the best treatment ever, and no one came near their woman. No one, no one, no one, no one, no one, no one did anything to them. And, 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 let's say...
Sir, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Let's all be quiet now. There's one speaker... Okay, I understand that. All right.
All right, sir, that's taken from the...
We're almost done with this, so let the gentleman speak. Don't say anything. Thank you.
All right. So for how long this genocide been going on? Since 1948? Since 1948, we couldn't bring the Palestinian people their rights to live. I'm not saying give them money or anything. Give them the rights to live. It's their land. It's mentioned in the Quran, it's mentioned in the Bible, and it's mentioned in the Torah. These people that are trying to take their land or fight for their land, the Israeli people, that's not your land. Get me one proof that this is your land. And there's a verse from the Quran that says that these Israeli people are claiming that they're not, that they're peacemakers, and that they're trying to defend their country, and they're trying to, like, spread peace all over the world. That's not true, because I'm sorry, no one that spreads peace will take a whole tank and go shoot up a place that has innocent people that are just trying to break their fast during Ramadan. No country will go shoot up the people praying in mosques and in the Aqsa Mosque or in the Dome of the Rock. Like, Israel is trying to win the media war in any kinds of way, but it's failing. It's failing bad. The whole world knows the truth. The whole world knows what's happening. Speaking of Egypt, I'm proud that my grandparents fought for Egypt when Israel came and took it, not once, but twice. First time, they came and took our land for six years or seven years, in 1967. And in 1973, we took them out, and after that, we asked for a ceasefire. Why is that? So business will happen, and like, we end all of the war. And now y'all come and start bombing our places and killing our people? I'm sorry, that has to end, and the genocide has to end. Y'all gotta call out for a ceasefire right now. I'm sorry, I don't know what are the people watching, or what are the people doing with their lives right now, when there's literally a genocide going on? Y'all are cool talking about the Russian and Ukrainian war, but you're not cool about talking about the Palestinian war? Like, come on. Like, I'm just not speaking for my religion or for my peeps. Only I'm just speaking out of humanity. It's just out of humanity. Look at the loss that's happening to Israel compared to the loss that's happening to Palestine. Look at the major difference. I'm sorry, like, it's only...
Thank you, sir. Are we done? Okay, before we get to the business item, I just want to take care of three other items real fast. First of all, I want to announce the expiry terms of Community Activities Commission. That's with the city clerk's office. I believe we're gonna go out and advertise for those terms. They'll affect of July 1, 2024. The new terms will start for four-year terms. And again, the city clerk's office will advertise it, and eventually we'll have interviews and then appointments to the Community Action Commission. Second of all, I want to adjourn this meeting in memory of Jacob Tushar, longtime Montclair resident. Also, his wife, Myrna Tushar, was a member of the Community Activities Committee at the time. Is there somebody else we're gonna adjourn this meeting in memory of?
The daughter of Hal Frederickson.
Oh, yes, we also want to adjourn the memory in the daughter of Hal Frederickson. Hal was a former city Montclair employee for a long time, and fortunately, his daughter succumbed to an accident. Her name's Allison, thank you. And then finally, the third item here is we will have a workshop here on May 6 at 5:45 regarding update on affordable affordable housing, homeless assistance, applications, awards, and projects. Any objections to the workshop to be placed on agenda for the May 6, if not so ordered? And now, we will come down to the business item. And this item is before the city council. We have a couple resolutions for consideration. Do we have any speakers this time? Mayor Ploton Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few comments, if you could please indulge me. I have some comments that I had written down before I arrived that I would like to share with you. And I also have some comments that I've come to the conclusion of since we have been here tonight. So I can tell you that I cannot imagine what it would be like if my home was destroyed by my neighbor and my child was kidnapped. I'd be devastated. Equally unimaginable would be if my community was destroyed and I couldn't feed my family or access health care. Each of those scenarios are horrific. Of course, we all want wars to stop. While my primary focus is on the well-being of Montclair residents, I do try to follow national, international politics. So one of the things, and these are, again, these are comments that I had before I came here. One of my thoughts was, if the President of the United States sent a resolution to Israel to negotiate a ceasefire... He sent his Secretary of State several times to negotiate a ceasefire. And then President Biden also sent a resolution to Israel demanding an immediate and sustainable ceasefire. Prime Minister Netanyahu has remained resolute that there will be a ceasefire when the hostages are released. If the Prime Minister ignored the President of the United States, there's no reason to think that he will listen to what we say here in Montclair. There are people who want a resolution and people who don't. No matter how we vote, some people are gonna be unhappy, and no matter what the final vote, it's an exercise in futility. Those are my comments before I got here. But what I do understand more than anything is my job from this dais is to listen to the people, whether I agree or don't agree, or whatever I think. And so I think, based on what I heard tonight, there are 22 people who spoke tonight who were very, very clear that they wanted us to stay local. There were 36 people who were very, very clear that we should have a ceasefire, we should do a ceasefire resolution. There were several people that I don't know what side they stood on, because they gave us a history lesson, so I can't really count them. But it is clear that the vast majority of the people want a ceasefire resolution. And although I don't believe that that's gonna make any change, I do believe it is my job to do the will of the people. Having said all that, I will support tonight, as of tonight, based on what the people said, what I heard from this audience, based upon what the people said, I will support a ceasefire resolution despite the fact that I think it's not gonna help. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my comments. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my comments.
Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you. I will keep it brief-ish. First, I just want to say thank you to everyone who has come out to speak. I think that this is what government is all about, and I appreciate hearing from each and every one of you. I feel that everyone, I hope that everyone felt heard tonight and at the last council meeting. I especially want to thank our Montclair High School students for coming out and speaking. It makes me proud that we live in a community that has such a group of respectful students that showed decorum and respect and gathered and organized and came to not one, but two, and some even three meetings, and made this happen. So kudos to Montclair High School and to the individuals who came out. What I've heard tonight, and what I've heard at the last council meeting, is a majority of speakers are calling for, are pleading for us to speak up for humanity. And the opposition that I've heard is asking us to stay local. Even if, for argument's sake, the proposed resolution was not a local matter, which I do not agree with, and I'll get to that in a minute, I can't justify caring more about that, about staying local, than the pleas to condemn the humanitarian atrocities that are coming from our residents. So what exactly is the responsibility that we have as local government officials? I believe that it extends beyond potholes and recreation, and we've heard pleas about addressing drug use and homelessness. But why do those issues come up? Because we, as residents, care about the health and the welfare and the safety of our residents. And is that not what everyone is here tonight fighting for? The welfare of the people that are hurting, that need to feel heard, that want to combat the antisemitism and the anti-Arab and anti-Muslim hate that is happening as a result of the atrocities that are happening right now? Is that not what the ceasefire is going to address? And the case in point, case in point, in just the last few years alone, you know, if we were to argue that our job as council members is only to address recreation and potholes and drug use and homelessness, case in point, in the last few years alone, we have passed anti-Asian hate resolutions, pride proclamations, and general anti-hate resolutions for the benefit of our residents. This is just another way that we, as council members, can tell our residents that we're listening. And this is a local matter. This is a matter that directly affects constituents. There has been, as a result of the war and increase in Islamophobia, anti-Arab discrimination, antisemitism in our city. We share constituents with our congressional delegation, and we have the ability to be a proxy for these shared constituents with our congressional delegation. The indiscriminate bombing of civilizations in Gaza is a humanitarian concern. There's no way around that. I want to share with you, and I will end on this note. We have our very first U.S. Special Representative for the City and State Diplomacy in the Global Office... I'm sorry, in the Office of Global Partnerships for the U.S. Department of State. Her name is Nina Achigian, and she wrote, "U.S. cities remain a voice for the country's values as federal leadership waivers." That is exactly what we are being called to do today, be a voice for our residents. Now, I don't even know that I need to address the other resolution, but just for argument's sake, I find many concerns with Resolution 24-3433. In the way that it's written, but also just as a general practice, if we are here today, and what we are here for is important, we can't say that we are never going to do this again. It just doesn't make any sense, and I can't tie my hands in that way. There's just no way to do that. But if we break this down line by line, affirming as policy the city council's practice to not act on matters considered the purview and maintenance of the state and national governments. We're not acting on matters considered the purview and maintenance of the state or national governments. We are considering a resolution that is simply supporting the government's call for a ceasefire. We're not telling anyone what to do. We're telling our constituents that we support you, we hear you, and we are supporting our government's call for a ceasefire. Further, to not consider or adopt resolutions, issue proclamations, or otherwise engage in discourse or advocacy adverse to the interests of Montclair. This is not adverse to the interests of Montclair. Quite the opposite, actually. This is advocacy and discourse that could potentially benefit the city of Montclair in very many ways. Financially, for one, as we've heard from our speakers today. Emotionally, I don't even need to explain that one. Or that would place the city council in the position of advocacy on matters outside the purview of local government. Again, that is not outside our purview. This is exactly what we're here for. Or that would potentially pit against each other factions or groups within Montclair. We're not pitting anybody against each other. We're saying that what is happening right now has caused a rise in hatred of anti... A rise in antisemitism... a rise in antisemitism, a rise in anti-Arab discourse and Islamophobia. We're saying that it's causing hatred across the board and it needs to stop. And we support a ceasefire that stops it. Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker is Councilmember Rue.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I have a procedural question. How did this resolution appear on the agenda this evening? In my many years on this council, a resolution to appear on an agenda needed to go to the council, a motion, a second, and a majority vote for it. That didn't happen. So how did this resolution get on here? I'm asking a question. It's a procedural item. In the years I've been on this council, if I wanted a resolution about something, I had to bring it to the council. I had to have a motion, a second, and a majority vote. That hasn't happened with this resolution. How did it get on here?
The city manager placed the resolution on the agenda after, excuse me, I'm having a conversation here. City manager placed the resolutions on the agenda after a conversation, the city manager. And I had, the city manager has a preview to place resolutions on the agenda, or set the agenda, excuse me.
So it will be possible in the future that if I have a resolution on something I'd like to bring forward, I don't have to bring it forward to this city council? I simply talk to the city manager and he can put it on?
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I may add, in fact, city staff always brings agenda items before the city council. Proclamations, resolutions, agenda reports. It's our job as staff to address issues that are of the interest of the community. And during the course of the last couple of weeks, staff made the determination that based on the comments from the public, it was to the community's interest as well as the council's interest to bring these items forward for the council to make a decision one way or the other as to whether or not they even want to discuss this issue, whether they want to consider acting on one of these issues or whether they want to defer it to a future city council meeting so that they can give it additional thought. Either way, it was going to come before the city council at one point or the other based on the interest of the community. And staff felt that it was better to present it to the city council at this time so the city council could proactively address it one way or the other.
Well, this is very good to know because in the future I will be bringing forward to you resolutions I'd like placed on this agenda.
Okay, well, that is not how I said it worked. What I said is that staff made the determination, not in consort or with consultation, with members of the city council individually or jointly. It was a decision by staff. It's our prerogative. It's what we've done throughout the history of the community. It's what every city does. It is staff's job to bring items forward. And I would not act on a individual city council member coming to me and asking me to do that.
Well, I have some resolutions I'd like to bring forward at some point. Having said that, I am not, I am in favor of us refraining from international affairs. Now, listen. We've had an issue simmering for 75 years now in India and what is now Pakistan. It's over the Kashmir. Lives have been lost. People have died. Should we get involved with that? There's an issue with North Korea and South Korea. Should we get involved?
Councilman Rue, let's, it's our turn to speak. You've had a chance to speak. Councilmember Martinez and Mayor Portonson speak. Let us speak now. Please be, just keep it quiet.
Should we get involved with that? There's an issue right now in the South China Sea involving the People's Republic of China and the Republic of China, otherwise known as Taiwan, over the oceanic rights in those areas. And shots have been fired in the last several years. I can look at the Basque separatist movement. Should we get involved with that? Can we get involved in North Korea and South Korea right now over the issue of the Dokdo Islands? North Korea claims it's theirs. South Korea is the administrator of the island and claims it's theirs. Where do we get involved with this? Now, I've heard about humanity and yes, I don't like people dying. I hear about people starving. Well, there are issues I believe locally that we can do something about right now. How many people out there know that we have high school students who are homeless? Students at Montclair High School that are homeless. We can do something about that right now. We can do something.
Excuse me, excuse me. Okay, excuse me, excuse me. I don't want to do this, but if you continue to interrupt, you're going to have to ask you to leave. I don't want to do that, okay, guys? You've already spoken. We've listened to what you said. We've spent almost over three hours here. I need you to be patient and keep your emotions to yourself, okay? If you don't like what's being said here, then please go out in the lobby.
Because that's an issue we can do something about right now. Let's get a homeless shelter built for our homeless high school students. Let's do that right now. Let's not resist it. Let's not wait two, three years until we get a study together. We know we can do that. We have men and women who have defended this country, who tonight are starving and sleeping on streets right here in Montclair. There are veterans. More than a year ago, I made a call, "Let's do something about a homeless shelter for veterans." And I'm talking about renovating a motel on Mission Boulevard. The same people who are worried about this tonight are not supportive of that. We have senior citizens. We have senior citizens. I'm not talking about necessarily everybody in the audience. There's a huge number of people. We have senior citizens who are sleeping on our streets. It's a humanitarian issue as well. And I'd like to see that addressed. I'd like to see something done. It's not just a workshop on something. It's not something that, oh, well, we'll address in the future or we'll provide the services and another city can provide the shelter. There are a lot of local issues that, to me, take precedent on this. And if in 75 years, 75 years, I'm sure a lot of resolutions have been passed. I'd like to see our time and effort spent on things here in Montclair and in our general region that we can do something about. And we can do something about homelessness almost instantly. I know of a city not too far from here that in less than nine months, from the time they thought of it until the time it opened, they had a tiny home village for homeless. If they can do it, we can do it. My thoughts are that we need to do things locally that I can do something about. I'm sure everybody here has spoken to our members of Congress, Congressmember Torres, Congressmember Aguilar, Congressmember Chu, and many others in our region. I'm sure you've also taken time to speak to our U.S. senators. They're the ones who can do something about this through their policies. If their voicemail is full, it's full, but you can write a letter. You can go to their office and talk to them. I fully believe that we need to keep things local because once we start branching out beyond that, where does it stop? So those are my thoughts tonight. Thank you. I will make that in a form of a motion to consider item Resolution 24-3433.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Councilman Lopez, did you?
Yeah, I seconded the motion. I just wanted to, okay, you acknowledge that. No, um, well, if you want to call it a vote, I will keep quiet because there's been plenty that's been said.
I don't know if you're making comments or anything or you have no comments.
At this time, I have no comments. I seconded the motion.
So there is a motion on the floor. Is there a substitute motion at this time or anything?
Yes, I would like to move for adoption of the second resolution. 3434.
So you're making a substitute motion and for the other item, which is the Resolution Number 24-3434. Am I correct, Chris?
So, excuse me, Mr. Barr. I think we would treat that as a request to amend the motion that has already been first and seconded.
No, typically, my experience, Diane, and maybe I'm, the organization I serve is you can make a motion and second a motion and someone can make a substitute motion and second that substitute motion and that will be voted on first and then you go to the original motion that was made.
Well, it's the same.
But I'm lying the opportunity for the other members to make a motion as well, so.
Well, it's the same effect as a request to amend that motion. Then you vote on the amendment or the substitution.
Okay, so we'll move, basically, is there a second to the substitute motion?
I wanted to talk about that. Thank you, Councilwoman Martinez. So despite the fact you've all heard me say that whichever way we go, it's really, we're not going to have any effect on Israel and Gaza. But having said that, because the people have spoken, I will second Councilwoman Martinez's motion.
Point of order.
And relax, so we're okay. So the substitute motion is for Resolution Number 24-3434. That's not successful, then we will vote on the Resolution Number 24-3433. I do want to say this. I, as an individual, support the Biden administration's call for an immediate ceasefire to hostile hostiles in the Israel-Gaza Strip conflict and that specific concrete immeasurable steps to be taken to curb civilian casualties and prevent harm to aid workers, that all hostages, prisoners of war and detainees be immediately returned to respect the states and further that humanitarian aid to be permitted to flow into the conflict-torn areas. Again, I want to support the Biden administration as this resolution speaks as a personal person, individual. So, any other speakers? Councilman Lopez, your light's on.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. So point of order to the city attorney then. So we have technically two competing motions on the table. What your statement is, is that you're treating the Martinez motion as a substitute motion that somehow would take precedence over the Rue main motion.
Well, see, I would not use the term substitute motion. It's a motion to amend the motion made by Councilmember Rue. And so you vote on the amendment to see whether the amendment would pass or not. If the amendment passes, that's the end because it was an amended motion of the first motion. If it fails, you then go back and address, it's like the amendment failed. So now you're back to the original motion that was made.
So then at this time, given what you said, it would be within a member of this body's purview to offer amendments to the substitute motion resolution, correct?
Yes.
Okay. That said, I offer the following three amendments to the Resolution Number, sorry, it's on the other page, 243434. And these are whereas's. Whereas, the Montclair City Council condemns Hamas for their unprovoked attack on Israel on October 6, 2023.
Oh, 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 can you hold on for a second?
They're not in the packet. I'm offering them as amendments.
Okay, I'm confused here. So where is the resolution here? 24-3433, right? No, 3434. Okay, you're, go ahead now.
I'm offering amendments.
On page 43.
Let me restart that over again. Whereas, the Montclair City Council condemns Hamas for their unprovoked attack on Israel on October 6, 2023, resulting in their terrorist acts of violence, murder, destruction, fear, and intimidation of innocent people. Whereas, the Montclair City Council condemns Hamas taking of innocent human beings as hostages and calls for all nations to enact sanctions of every kind until every hostage is released in good health, free of harm. Whereas, the Montclair City Council recognizes the nation of Israel's right to defend its borders, its people, its national interests, and their right to rescue their citizens held hostage.
So I just want to understand, you're trying to add those three?
I would add that to that second. Well, let me phrase it this way. I will, for all intents and purposes of eliminating confusion, will call the first amendment the Rue amendment, I mean, the Rue motion. And the second amendment, the Martinez amendment. I am making a proposed amendment to the Martinez motion on the resolution in which she's proposing.
Okay, so you want to add the three whereas, what do you want to add to three whereas's in the resolution?
Anywhere before the be it resolves are. Because they would fall in in any, in any section of that particular.
Okay, so you want to put it before now therefore to be resolved? Is that where you want to put them?
Sure.
Okay, can you repeat them once more, please?
Sure. Whereas.
Vote and a little slower.
The Montclair City Council condemns Hamas for their unprovoked attack on Israel on October 6, 2023, resulting in their, excuse me, folks, it doesn't work this way. You don't, it doesn't work this way, folks. You don't interrupt us, please. We did not interrupt you. We extended you the courtesy. Please extend the same courtesy. You can't do this at government bodies, folks.
Okay, Mr. Lopez, can you please continue?
Whereas, the Montclair City Council condemns Hamas for their unprovoked attack on Israel on October 6, 2023. Is it October 7? Thank you.
Excuse me, can I hear you? Excuse me, Councilman Lopez. I am trying to listen to Councilman Lopez. I don't need comments from the audience right now, okay? This is a preview with the city council. I don't want to be asking people to leave the room, okay? Please. Councilman Lopez, can you start all over again because I'm getting, you know, this interruption is throwing me off.
I will acknowledge my error and I thank you for the correction on the date. Whereas, the Montclair City Council condemns Hamas for their unprovoked attack on Israel on October 7, 2023, resulting in their terrorist acts of violence, murder, destruction, fear, and intimidation of innocent people.
That's the first whereas.
Correct. Whereas, the Montclair City Council condemns Hamas taking of innocent human beings as hostages and calls for all nations to enact sanctions of every kind until every hostage is released in good health, free of harm.
Number two.
This would be three, actually.
No, you just finished number two.
Yes. Whereas, the Montclair City Council recognizes the nation of Israel's right to defend its borders, its people, its national interests, and their right to rescue their citizens held hostage.
Okay, any comments on that? You see, you made an amendment to, you made a motion, right?
I did make a motion.
Was there a, was there?
I'm dead.
Okay, is there a second to the motion? All right. Okay, so with that, and there's no comments on that. And can I, let's have an electronic vote based on the Lopez amendment to add the where, the three whereas's. Excuse me, we're voting your, excuse me, we're voting. Okay, Andrea, please set it up. So again, this is the motion that was made by Councilmember Lopez. Everybody queued? Have you voted yet? Everybody there? Okay, that's adopted four, two, one. So those three whereas's have been added to the Resolution, excuse me, Okay, so with that, now we have the Martinez motion on the agenda. Martinez's motion is to adopt Resolution 24-3434. And.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, city attorney.
The way, we should have clarified it before the motion. The way it was, you were still voting on Resolution 3434 as it was amended by Councilmember Lopez.
No, I believe the motion, the clarification, the motion was to add the three whereas's.
Instead.
Yes, I was merely to add the three amendment, the three amended phrase of whereas's, rather, to the resolution proposed. So now a motion then would have to be.
Is that the seconders, seconders' understanding? Okay.
So then a motion, I'm presuming, would have to, a vote would have to happen on the main reso.
You wished to have a re-vote on that one for clarification purposes.
I, I, here's where I'm confused, and maybe somebody can clarify for me. I thought we just voted on Resolution 243434 with some additional whereas's, correct? But wait. But my colleagues are saying something else.
What is your understanding of the last motion that just took place?
If I may interject, what happened here is that Member Martinez made a motion. It was amended by Councilmember Lopez, and you voted on the Martinez motion with those amendments.
Well.
So the, the first motion.
It adds that language to the amendment.
All right, all right, excuse me, and I, I think there is misunderstanding what the last motion is. Okay, excuse me, excuse me, thank you. So I, it was my understanding, and I believe it's the understanding of the makers of the motions, that the three whereas's were just being added to the Martinez motion, but not voting upon the Martinez motion. So, for clarifications then, then I think the best thing to do is let's, I move to, let's reconsider the last motion that just took place. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Okay, we're going to reconsider the last motion, and we're going to start us all over again.
Mr. Mayor, can.
Just for clarifications.
Well, I think for the record, we need to be clear what it is the council thinks that they're most, they're voting on then. So the way that it has been presented is that Councilmember Martinez made a motion for adoption of 243434. It was seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Johnson. And Councilmember Lopez made a motion to amend the Martinez motion. And that amendment was to add those three whereas's. You didn't call for a discussion amongst the council members as to whether or not they were okay with those three whereas's being added. So the vote that was being taken was that the Martinez motion was incorporating those three whereas's, and that's what you were voting on. So what you want to do is, if you want to reverse this, you have to ask for a discussion amongst the council members as to whether or not they're agreeable with the amendments being made by Councilmember Lopez. And whether the council members choose to accept that or not will depend on how the next motion will proceed.
Well, at this time, I made a motion to reconsider the last vote, seconded by Councilman Lopez. The motion on the, on the table is to reconsider that vote, and then essentially we're going to start all over again. So can I get electronic?
Technically, you have to go to the maker of the motion and ask if she is okay with those three amendments.
Well, no, no, not, no.
You know, Diane, can you clarify what we're trying to do here?
Feel free to come to me, and I'll explain what I intended.
Yes, in essence, you have done what City Manager Starr has indicated. We always, you vote on the amendment, so, but what, so Councilmember Lopez said he wanted to amend the Councilwoman Martinez's motion. So, yes, you could say you were just voting on that amendment and not on the main motion.
Right.
So again, I'm going to ask that, we have a motion at table, we're going to reconsider the last vote that took place, and then it's been seconded, it, let's have an electronic vote, please.
Let's be clear, this is to just add those three whereas's for consideration to 3434. So it's a request to amend 3434 to add the three whereas's.
No, I respectfully disagree. The second that I gave the mayor was to reconsider the last vote because of the confusion. But your prior comment is absolutely correct, in that I offered a motion to amend. It was seconded, it was voted upon. Now, the body could have rejected the amendments, and we could have gone back to the original proposed document, which is fine. Therefore, the document in its entirety with the amendments then needs to hold a separate vote.
Okay, so let's, let's have a mo, let's have an electronic vote to, again, consider reconsidering, reconsider the last vote that took place, let's have an electronic vote, please.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, before we do that, I apologize, but before we do that, Madam City Clerk, can you just read the, so I just make sure that I understand what we're doing? So it's, we're talking about Resolution 24-3434 with three whereas's, and whether or not we agree only to the whereas's? Or are we talking about whether we agree to the whereas's and the motion?
Here's the problem, we just, we just took a, a vote, and there's misunderstanding if it just was a three whereas's, or it was a whereas's and approval of the resolution. That's the confusion right now. So I'm just trying to do is, let's rescind the last vote we did and start all over again. That's what I'm trying to do, that's all I'm trying to do. So again, the motion is to rescind the last vote. I believe Councilmember Lopez seconded that motion, and let's have an electronic vote simply to rescind the last vote that took, that occurred. No, rescind the last vote. We're trying to clarify what we're trying to do here. Rescind the last vote. Everybody vote, okay. The vote is four to one. Councilwoman Martinez, no. Now, I believe Councilmember, let's, let's do this again. Councilmember Lopez, please make a, I believe you had a motion earlier, you want to redo your motion again?
I would, Mr. Mayor. I will move to amend Resolution 3434 to include the following three whereas's. The Montclair City Council condemns Hamas for their unprovoked attack on Israel on October 7, 2023, resulting in their terrorist acts of violence, murder, destruction, fear, and intimidation of innocent people. Whereas, the Montclair City Council condemns Hamas taking of innocent human beings as hostages, and calls for all nations to enact sanctions of every kind until every hostage is released in good health, free of harm. Whereas, the Montclair City Council recognizes the nation of Israel's right to defend its borders, its people, its national interests, and their right to rescue their citizens held hostage. I will second that.
Just clarify that motion that just took place there. Excuse me, sir. Okay, Sergeant Arms, escort him out of the office. Escort that gentleman out of the office. Sergeant Chief. All right, we're, time for a break. I want that gentleman out of the, out of this building.
Yes.
We're, we're on a five-minute break. Okay, we're going to get this meeting started, please. I'm going to ask, please, everybody, please go and get seated now, thank you. All right. All right, let's get this meeting started here, in front of you. Okay, excuse me, ma'am. Okay, so in front of you now, you have the proposed amendments by Councilmember Bill Rue in writing, and. Did I say, what did I just say? It's getting too late for me now. How about Councilman Lopez? So in front of you are the three amendments by Councilmember Lopez in writing. Give everybody a couple of minutes to go through them. And I believe we have a motion, is there a motion, Andrea? Is there already a motion made?
We just did the one to rescind the last vote, right?
We have already adopted that motion.
Right, that was the last motion.
That's the last motion? Okay.
We didn't complete a vote on.
Okay, because we got interrupted by somebody, that part of the problem. So go ahead, is there a motion, Councilman Lopez, then, on this?
Mr. Mayor, I think from what I've just heard in the last few minutes while we're taking a break, there's a question about the second whereas, about sanctions. Can you, Councilman Lopez, can you clarify your whereas?
Sure, but I, I, I think that plays into the problem of adopting the very resolution in itself, because by stating that we are, calls for all nations to enact sanctions, so all nations, that would be all a hundred and some on the face of the earth, to enact sanctions of every kind, that'd be financial, that'd be militarily, that would be everything that a nation receives, being Hamas, until every hostage is released in good health, free of harm. So enact all the countries of the world, put pressure on Hamas, and drive them financially, militarily, everything, until they release all remaining 89 Israeli hostages, and there are others of other nations that are held captive.
Okay, thank you, we're trying to have a conversation here, can't have you guys interrupt us. Okay, Councilmember, Councilmember, I'm sorry, you're Mayor Pro Tim these days, so Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
And I, and I would just say, the body couldn't vote my amendments down. I, I mean, I'm not going to lose sleep over it, that's the majority's will, you're entitled to do that.
Can we eliminate the second whereas?
There's no, there's no motion at this time.
Well, no, his verbiage, I'm asking Councilmember Lopez.
No, ma'am, no, to my colleague, no, I'm, I can't in good conscience budge on that.
Then can we make it about all countries, rather than just naming one?
Well, no, the problem is though here, is the reason why, okay, the reason why I wrote this whereas is because I'm only laying blame at the foot of Hamas for holding these innocents hostage. And because of that, excuse me, and because of that, yes, innocence, because of that, we should encourage and basically bring them to their knees until they release every single one. Hamas is a terrorist organization. Hamas is a terrorist organization that has been recognized by 33. Shh.
Okay, I think, I think, excuse me, sir, I'm, excuse me, sir, I'm speaking. So, I think we have, you have, if you want to make an amendment at this time, Councilman Lopez, I think Councilman Martinez, and did you want to say something? There's no amendment, technically, a motion technically, but do you want to say something?
Mr. Mayor, I would just suggest on Mr. Lopez's proposed amendments, the second whereas that we're talking about, where you say to enact sanctions of every kind, should we add on Hamas? If that's what you intend.
I would be fine with adding on Hamas.
Because otherwise, I think it's a little vague.
I would be fine with adding on Hamas.
So where is this being, excuse. Okay, so where's that being at, I'm sorry, for City Clerk's purposes. Council, you know, we can't have three people talking up here, so I'm trying to understand the change being made. What's the change again, City, that's the attorney?
Well, it just says enact sanctions of every kind until every hostage, but I think what Councilmember Lopez is saying, sanctions of every kind on Hamas. If that's not what you intend, it's just, otherwise, it's kind of vague.
And I am fine with that language.
On Hamas, after kind, is that, does the City Clerk understand that? Okay. Okay, excuse me, all right, so, we don't, there's no motion at the time on this table, so. Councilman Martinez, did you want to say something this time, or do we have a, someone want to make a motion?
Yeah, so I'm, so I'm not sure I understand. I moved originally to, for a vote on Resolution 24-3434. Is that still on the table, are we considering?
Let's turn it on the table right now unless I hear a motion, an amendment to your motion.
Mr. Mayor, is mine still on the table, 3433?
That is, that's, that's, yes, it is still. So, right now, technically, it's Councilmember Martinez's motion at the table, am I correct, C. Attorney? So unless there's an amendment, right now, it's Councilmember Martinez's motions on the table without these three amendments here.
We still haven't voted on the amendment, revoted on the amendment.
Yeah, we haven't voted, but there's no motion, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion for the three amendments put forward by Councilmember Lopez.
Okay, there's, there's been, motion seconded by Councilmember Lopez.
And I have comments.
Council, Councilwoman Martinez.
So, so we have a carefully crafted resolution that a lot of thought and effort was put into. These three whereas's we have not seen before tonight, they're poorly worded. Proposed amendment, the first whereas, the Montclair City Council condemns Hamas for their unprovoked attack. It was not an unprovoked attack.
All right, you made your point, thank you.
Resulting in their terrorist, I'm not even sure what that means. Condemns Hamas for their unprovoked attack on Israel, resulting in Israel's terrorist acts of violence, murder, destruction, fear, and intimidation? Does that make sense? If that's, if that's what that means. So then I would clarify that the word there means Israel's terrorist acts of violence? If, if that's what you intend, that's, that's how it reads, I don't know what. Whereas, the Montclair City Council condemns Hamas's taking of innocent human beings as hostages. Also, I, I think the Montclair City Council would condemn anyone's taking of innocent human beings as hostages. My, my point.
Martinez, have you ended your comments, or?
No, my point is, it's unnecessarily divisive, when this was carefully crafted in a way that is, it carefully considers all points of view. The way that this is worded does not. Calls for all nations to enact sanctions of every kind, we address that. Whereas, the Montclair City Council recognizes the nation of Israel's right to defend its border, its people, its national interest. What about Palestine's? I, I, I think it's unnecessary to add these three things in unless we're going to have inclusive language. It seems that it's going to create divisiveness in, in, among our residents, and I would recommend that we do not add, add these proposed amendments in.
Okay, Councilmember Martinez to have the floor, I assume you're done, okay? At this time, sounds like we can vote, I'm hoping. Let's have electronic vote, please.
Can we be clear on what we're voting on?
Currently, we're voting to add three amendments to. 3434, but doesn't mean we're approving 3434. If these three are added, then we got to still have another motion, well, then we'll look at Martinez's motion to vote on 3434.
And is that as amended as we've discussed? Because there's quite a few amendments that would need to be made.
An amendment, you said?
Yeah, it is, we have discussed some amendments that would need to be made to these proposed amendments. Some revisions to the proposed amendments.
You know what, let's just, you know, I'm going to make it real simple, let's just make this real simple right now. Let's just do this. The motion right now is, Councilmember Lopez, if you agree on the motion, is that here are three amendments being added to Resolution 3434, meaning that if the council votes in favor, the three amendments plus count, the entire Resolution 3434 is adopted. Is that, is that, just make it real clear. That was the problem the first time, is that, are you amended that?
Which would then require me to cast a vote on the overall draft of the Martinez motion.
Exactly, yes, yes.
I suppose if that vote goes forward, I'll be voting no.
Okay, but as the maker of the motion, you're okay with that? As the maker of the second motion, or you wanted somebody else?
I, I, I'm confused, we are adding these three amendments, I want to make certain.
Yes.
When we vote on the, are we just voting on these three amendments?
No, I'm proposing now that we just, these three amendments plus the entire resolution. So the motion is to adopt a resolution. So the motion is to adopt a resolution with these three amendments. That's the motion. I believe Councilmember Lopez said he's okay with that motion. Am I correct?
I am, but I will, I will be voting no on the vote.
Yes, I understand that part. Councilmember...
That's what's confusing me. Are we, we're not voting on the amendments, we're voting on all of this other.
Okay, what I'm going to do is, just for, just to get this moving, excuse me, I need some, I need you public to quiet down, please. So I'm going to second the motion so we can get this started right now. So again, the motion is by Councilman Lopez, I'm going to second the motion, we're going to vote on Resolution 3434, that includes the three proposed amendments as presented. That's the motion. Does everybody understand that now? Just for clarifications. Okay, can we please have electronic vote? Okay, that whole thing is no, so that, that failed on a zero-five vote. So now, we're going to consider the motion by Councilman Martinez to adopt Resolution Number 3434 as is, there are no amendments, no changes, as is, as you see on page 43 and page 44 of the staff report. That's the motion, I mean, the maker of that motion was Councilman Lopez, the second was by Councilman, Mayor Protim Johnson, there's no comments, we will now do electronic vote. Martinez.
Martinez made the...
What did I just say?
Lopez.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Martinez. Okay, Councilmember Martinez, Mayor Protim Johnson seconded the motion, no, no comments, I see, so we will now do electronic vote. That motion failed two to three. Now we have the motion in front of us by... I'm sorry. We have the motion in front of us, Resolution 3433. I believe the motion was made by Councilmember Rue and seconded by Councilmember Lopez. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Any comments on the motion? If not, we'll vote. That motion is adopted three to two. Thank you. We're gonna, we're gonna take a break, everybody? We're gonna take a break? We're gonna get the room cleared? I'm gonna ask, I asked the officers to clear this room. I'm asking the room to be cleared. City Clerk, City Clerk, City Clerk, the meeting's adjourned, thank you.